Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 12th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members.
Azadrian.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Botman.
Here. And may we have your report, please?
It's the flag salute next.
Oh, I blew it again. Okay, would everyone please rise for the flag salute? Put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal, just as for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tongva people. As we are in the midst of the holiday season and as some members of our community are currently celebrating Hanukkah, let us reflect on the guiding lights of resilience, unity, and hope that illuminate our paths. In the spirit of celebration, let us embrace the essence of the festival of lights, recognizing the strength found in perseverance, the warmth of community, and the triumph of light over darkness. May this moment remind us of our capacity to overcome adversity, to kindle the flames of understanding, and to cherish the diversity that enriches our lives. Let us honor the values of compassion, generosity, and solidarity, uplifting those in need and spreading joy in our shared journey. May we strive for a world where the glow of kindness and acceptance shines brightly for all. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. And now, if we could get your report, please.
The agenda for the December 12th, 2023 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on December 7th, 2023 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what's next?
Next, our presentations on appointments. The first item is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, December 19, 2023, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor Botman and council. Next week in the afternoon, we'll start off with the Housing Authority, just the approval of minutes on that agenda. The evening council meeting has three items on consent, the first being from Community Services and Parks. That's going to be a report regarding the Office of Grants and Local Services Funds for the restoration of the Casey Stengel Baseball Field, which was approved back in 2223 state budget. The next item will be from the Fire Department regarding a building purchase order adjustment. And the last consent item is from Human Resources, and that'll be related to the selection of the broker of record for the city's benefits program. Under action items, we'll have a report from Finance regarding the first quarter financial status update. And Glendale Water and Power is going to introduce the electric revenue bond ordinance. We'll also have one hearing that night related to GWP, and that'll be the approval of their interconnection agreement and approval of fees in connection with customer-owned, non-net energy metering generation.
Okay, thank you. And what is next?
Next is the reappointment of Talin Shahbazian to the Planning Commission nominated by Azadrian and Divine, 12-523.
Okay, would like to...
I believe we have Ms. Shahbazian in the audience today. This is a reappointment. We've had the honor of having her on the Planning Commission for many years. She's a senior planner with the Los Angeles Air Force Base. If I'm not...
Has to be in a D O two.
I think the resume on hand was an older resume.
Was it? Okay, I apologize.
Since I'm actually with the City of Pasadena, I'm a transportation planner with the City of Pasadena.
Well, we're delighted to reappoint you. As everybody knows, this is a new system that we have in place where two council members get to serve on a panel together and selected together. And obviously, we're overjoyed that you're still willing to serve. So, thank you for your service. If you'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Botman, council members, staff. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to actually stand here and having faith in me to continue serving the city. Thank you, Councilwoman Astrian and Divine for the nomination. And special thanks to Councilmember Aran Najarian for the initial appointment. It's been an exciting experience, and I am looking forward to continue serving the city at my best capacity. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you for your service.
No questions, yeah, thank you. Now we'll need a motion in a second.
I'll move aside. Second.
Second. Okay, we'll have roll call.
Councilmembers Azadrian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes.
I just waited here to thank you again. Thanks again.
Congratulations.
Okay, we have one more reappointment?
Reappointment of Stephen Riffel to the Vector Control District nominated by Botman, 12-0523.
Okay, and is Mr. Riffel here, by any chance?
Oh, thanks.
No, I don't think so. Okay. And as I mentioned last week, he was, Mr. Riffel was originally nominated to serve the remainder of the term that was vacated by Councilmember, ex-councilmember Agajanian. So, he served, and he's interested in continuing his service. And I think we have an option to appoint him for two or four years. I would suggest we just appoint him for four years. He's been attending and has served well. So, that would be my suggestion. But I guess I don't make the motion, so I'll leave that to somebody else.
I'll make that motion for, to appoint Mr. Riffel to a four-year term.
Second.
Okay, good. So, any other comments? And I assume we don't have any cards. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Azadrian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. Okay, good. Next item?
Next item is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, any requests from the public? Any requests from my colleagues to pull an item?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. We'll take roll call on that.
Councilmembers Azadrian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. Okay, moving along well. What is next?
Our next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay. And why don't I start with Councilmember Kasakian?
Sure. Thank you. The only thing I want to, there were a number of events. I'm sure my colleagues will speak about some of the others, but the one that I was able to attend this weekend and meant a lot was the naming of our first memorial square or the first square here in Glendale. The intersection here at Isabel and Broadway will be named the Sadio Munamori Memorial Square, named after one of our, one of the, the only Congressional Medal of Honor recipient that we have who was born in Glendale. Sadio Munamori gave his life in the defense of our country and our values in Italy during World War II. Just a month before the end of the war, he was a member of the Gopher Broke 442nd Infantry. It had been a long time dream of mine to have a way to memorialize this great American. And we had a wonderful event that was emceed by Dr. Mitchell Mackey from the Gopher Broke Museum in downtown Los Angeles. The consulate of Japan was present and helped sponsor it, the Japanese-American National Museum. But I think most moving to many of us was actually having two members of the Gopher Broke Unit who were in their 90s, 98 years old, both of them, who were in attendance, as well as the great nephew of Sadio Munamori and his, I believe it was his niece that was there as well.
Yeah, I think so.
Who was the mother. James Nakakihara was there and gave some words. I thought it was a wonderful ceremony. And thank you to all my colleagues and to everyone who helped make this happen. It was very special. For anyone who wants to see the square, there's a memorial sign now on the intersection. You can see it just next to our war memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Astrian?
Sure. I'll cover Sunday's Hanukkah celebration. Our Adams Hill Neighborhood Association actually put together a wonderful community event. You know, every time they put events together at Adams Square Park, it seems like the whole neighborhood is out. It's always very diverse and very homey. We had the opportunity to light the menorah with safe candles and had kids join us. And so, just a huge thank you to the Neighborhood Association for putting that together and for everybody that participated. I know that they're going to be having some Christmas events coming up in the neighborhood. So, I would suggest that if you don't do so now, follow them on Instagram at Adams Hill Glendale. They're always posting a lot of neighborhood events that they're hosting at the park.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, nothing. Councilmember Divine?
I just wanted to reiterate that the memorial unveiling, the memorial square was absolutely very, very special. And we should be so honored to have a Congressional Medal of Honor winner actually born in our city who gave his life for two of his comrades. I also attended the Women in Business Legislative Update Awards Luncheon. And we had some really fabulous women from Glendale who received these awards. Judy Kendall, Robin Goldsworthy, Sedekajian, Davis, what's, Yvette Davis. Bart, uh huh, Davis. Gloria Salas from Zonta, from Burbank, was also. Anahit Oshagon, who curates our Reflect Space at the library, was one of the awardees. So, I was really proud of all the women in our city that were given these awards. It was very special. And the next weekend, on Saturday, at 6:30 at Adams Square, as Councilmember Astrian was saying, they're going to have Christmas caroling. Santa Claus will be there. You can take pictures free. They emphasize free because I guess you have to pay in other places. But he will be there, and it's a surprise. So, make sure, come on over and sing some carols and meet Santa up close and in person. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add, we were all at the unveiling of the memorial for Sadio Munamori. But one thing that wasn't mentioned is that while he was in this company and fighting to defeat fascism in World War II, his family was detained at, do you remember the name of the, what's the name of the detention center?
Manzanar.
Manzanar, right. His family was at Manzanar. And, you know, it was, it was just, I think it's interesting, ironic. I don't know what the right word is. But anyway, he, we're awarding him and also, I guess, in the process acknowledging, you know, that dark chapter of our history during World War II. So, anyway, I thought I'd mention that. The other thing I have is, we had our second Repair Cafe over the weekend. And I have a little image to display. And for those of you who don't know, this is basically an opportunity to bring your broken items from home. It can be electronics. It can be, I saw fans, I saw toaster ovens. I brought a coffee maker, which is being repaired right there. And you can also bring clothes to get hemmed and otherwise repaired with sewing experts. And they also had knife sharpeners. They had a bunch of stuff. So, we, this is the second one that we've held. And you can see there, I had this coffee maker that has been sitting in my, in a closet for probably two years, waiting for the opportunity to bring it to a repair cafe because the last thing I want to do is throw it out and have it go into the landfill. So, I brought it. And what's fun is not only getting it fixed, actually, the fun part is sitting and watching the guy do it and having, getting a little bit of a tutorial. So, I really never knew what went into the guts of a coffee maker. It was pretty interesting. So, anyway, we're going to do another one. I don't know if anybody remembers the precise date, in March, but we'll be announcing it. I think this one is going to be at the Montrose Library. The one we had the other day was at the, at Adams Square, what do we call that library, family, Library Connections near the mini park. So, we're rotating them around. But the next one will be in Montrose. And any tinkers out there or any seamstresses or any knife sharpeners or anybody else that wants to participate, I think we're going to be looking to try to expand our portfolio of people. It's all, it's free. People just come in, they volunteer because they just love to do this stuff and they love to interact. And so, if anybody's a tinker and they want to get involved, please let our, I guess it's our sustainability team, let them know about it. And also, keep an eye out if you have anything that would otherwise end up in the landfill that could possibly fix. And I was told that 47 items were repaired. There were 10 items that didn't get repaired either because they came in too late or they were not repairable. But 47 items got repaired and didn't go into the landfill. So, I thought that was great. Okay. Any staff comments?
No, sir.
No, okay. Then what's next?
There are no community event announcements. So, the next item are action items. Action item A, Glendale Water and Power Regarding 2024 Integrated Resource Plan. One Resolution Adopting the 2024 Glendale Water and Power Integrated Resource Plan in Compliance with the Requirements of California Senate Bill SB 350.
Okay. Mr. Galanian, you want to start this off?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Botman, Member of City Council. As our presentation team gets settled in, just wanted to mention that the IRPs are planning documents that we need to develop, utilities, publicly-owned utilities need to develop and submit to the California Energy Commission every five years. This IRP is also a critical component of GWP's strategy to meet the city's future energy needs over the next 20 years. Over the past seven months, GWP and their two consultants have conducted a comprehensive public outreach, modeling and analyzing six separate scenarios involving the Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group, or STAG, you'll be hearing about, over six sessions that met. After you hear about all six scenarios and the details, you'll be asked to adopt Scenario One, which is GWP's preferred pathway, which in their professional opinion will achieve goals for system resiliency, increased renewable resource integration, and emission reductions. This preferred scenario focuses on balancing reliability, affordability, and environmental sustainability. I also like to add that GWP will continue to work on achieving this council's goal of 100% clean energy by 2035 and will not disregard that direction because of the adoption of the recommended scenario. And we will provide periodic updates to councils. So, as you know, what they have strived to achieve towards that 100% clean energy. With that, we have a team of presenters. I'll start off with Scott Mellon, our Assistant General Manager, Water and Power. And we have a representative from our two consultants, Ascend Analytics and Strategen Consulting. Thank you.
Thank you. As we mentioned, Scott Mellon, Assistant General Manager, Power Management, Glendale Water and Power. To my right, we have Mr., I want to make sure I say your name right. Batnagar. Mr. Batnagar, he's from Strategen Consulting. And we have Dr. Mock from Ascend Analytics. We're here today, and we are pleased to present to you the GWP's 2024 Integrated Resource Plan. We'll begin with a brief background. As you're likely familiar now, Senate Bill 350 requires the governing body of a publicly-owned utility with an annual electrical average load exceeding 700 gigawatt-hours, such as Glendale Water and Power, to adopt an IRP and provide updates at least once every five years to assist the utility in achieving planning goals. These goals are generally focused on system reliability, cost effectiveness, and environmental sustainability, essentially, GWP's mantra of reliability, affordability, and sustainability. The IRP is a dynamic, long-term planning document that utilizes our current understanding of technologies and forecasts and guides GWP with energy-related decisions like ensuring alignment with regulatory requirements and policy goals, economic considerations, and the evolving energy landscape. It includes a detailed analysis of the utility's current and future energy and capacity needs. It also includes strategies for meeting policy goals, such as the renewable energy and greenhouse gas reduction targets. It lays out the physical and operational constraints that are specific to the utility. In GWP's case, this would be our transmission limitations, limited flexibility on the must-take, must-run resources, like Magnolia, as well as reserve margin constraints to maintain reliability. The IRP establishes the foundation for certain decisions affecting the city's resource choices and general priorities, such as meeting energy needs while ensuring we maintain system reliability, environmental sustainability, and cost effectiveness. The IRP needs to be updated periodically to reflect changes in energy demand, technological advancements, and regulatory requirements. Since the transportation sector accounts for nearly 40% of statewide greenhouse gas emissions, POUs are urged to address procurement for transportation electrification. This might include planned programs and prioritization of investments to promote electrification. Developing an IRP is a time-consuming and data-intensive process. To facilitate the process with council's approval on May 2, GWP teamed up with Ascend Analytics and Data Modeling and Strategen Consulting as a subcontractor, guiding a detailed stakeholder engagement effort utilizing community town halls and by establishing a Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group. With that, we'll jump right into the model analytics, and I'll hand it over to Dr. Mock.
So, we'll go to Mr. Batnagar first. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm, as Scott mentioned, Thiruput Nader with Strategen Consulting. And I'll be speaking to some of the stakeholder engagement efforts as part of the IRP. The Ascend Analytics' original proposal was to hold two in-person town halls on the IRP. After feedback from the city council and the community and through discussions with, across, across the team with GWP and Ascend, we overall decided to increase the number of town halls to four. These four sessions were held at the dates and locations identified on this slide. And all were lasted about over two hours each. For the first town hall, there were about 35 attendees at the first, excuse me, the first two, 27 attended the third, and 17 attended the final meeting. The locations, times, and dates were chosen to allow for as many of the, as much of the community to participate as possible. The intended locations were varied across, across the area of Glendale. And the third meeting was hosted on a weekend to provide some flexibility for those who couldn't attend during the week. Armenian and Spanish interpreters were available at all meetings. And a recording of the town halls and associated materials, presentations, minutes, and some of the other documents and content that are shared are available at GWP's website, glendaleca.gov/2224IRP. So, just quickly highlighting the different sessions. The 29th, June 29 session covered Introduction to Integrated Resource Planning, Basics of the GWP System and the Modeling Process. We also performed a community resource preference activity to gather input on preferred and non-preferred resources. July 24th, at Spar Heights Community Center, GWP staff provided details on GWP's system, both local and remote resources, customer-side resources, and an update on planned modeling scenarios and the overall STAG process, which is a Stakeholder Advisory Group process. Finally, a community preference activity was also undertaken during the second town hall to gather input on preferred clean, the preferred clean energy timeline of town hall representatives, costs sensitivities, preferences and preferences around local and remote resources. August 12th was at Brand Studios, which covered a presentation of modeling inputs and assumptions and an update on the STAG progress, current situation, and all proposed modeling scenarios. And the final town hall on November 16th, which we'll get into a little bit further, covered results from the overall modeling plot process and scenario selection effort. The Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group, or as we call it, the STAG, was comprised of, intended to comprise of 14 individuals who live and work, live or work in Glendale with the intent of providing consistent and detailed community input to the process. The STAG was formed during, was formed using a two-pronged approach. Glendale Water and Power sent invitations to 12 organizations who represent important segments of the community, including renters, homeowners, environmental advocates, Latino and Armenian communities, and others. From these invitations, eight organizations were ultimately confirmed, ultimately confirmed their interest in serving on the STAG. In addition, GWP issued an open call for STAG members with an application available on the website and brought up during the first town hall. 22 applications were received. And Strategen Consulting, we took those applications, reviewed them, subject to the criteria that's also posted on the website, and narrowed that down to seven top applicants who were extended invitations to join. The intent of the STAG was to be as representative as possible of the larger community. Of course, there were challenges in doing so. Diversity of the STAG was limited by the number and demographics of the applicants, as well as the invited organization's representatives. Despite some of the constraints and the, some of the limitations in diversity, there was a wide range of opinions. And that led to robust discussions and a broad, broad range of issues throughout the STAG, STAG timeframe. There were, as listed here, 14 members originally that were reduced to actually 13 with one member not being unresponsive and not, not joining STAG meetings. Again, like the town halls, the number of STAG meetings was also increased upon discussion and feedback from city council. And we also pursued, we being Strategen Consulting, also pursued additional mechanisms to engage the community, the STAG, and specifically through virtual office hours and a robust email response effort. Finally, as mentioned, during the IRP status presentation in October by Scott, the STAG showed strong interest in the overall, in sort of understanding the Glendale Water and Power system, planning constraints, all of those which we'll, Brandon will get into in a few minutes here. Resource options, resource limitations, transmission limitations, customer solar and storage options in progress towards goals. solar, and storage options, and progress towards goals, virtual power plants, and the feasibility impacts of hydrogen usage, all of which we will be getting into here to talk through. Finally, the, to ensure it public could follow the content of the meetings, presentations, and minutes have been posted on the website at the link identified on the screen, glendaleca.gov/2024IRP/STAG. Quick overview on the overall process. GWP and the STAG, made up of the 13 community members, developed six future scenarios for Ascent Analytics to model. Ascent tested these strategies in their modeling framework, which Brandon will get into, to compare how the scenarios varied on reliability, sustainability, and affordability, these three parameters. These results were presented to GWP and STAG for discussion and implications, and then based on the results, GWP has chosen a preferred scenario, which they'll present today. The commission, GWP Commission, was presented with GWP selection on November 6th. Two of the present commissioners endorsed GWP's selection. And finally, GWP presented, as I mentioned, the selection to the public at the town hall meeting on November 16th. So STAG considered the STAG through STAG member participation, and also through the town hall videos and minutes, as well as the materials being posted on the website. Input was brought in from the town halls to the STAG meetings. It was clear from the town halls that there was a heavy emphasis on customer resources, clean rooftop solar, energy efficiency, and demand response. The community from the town halls presented a preference for local renewables, and also presented a preference for clean energy timelines that exceed California's 2045 mandate. In addition, in response, excuse me, in response to feedback from the town halls and the STAG, Ascent and GWP added a third community scenario, IRP modeling, for a total of six scenarios that were considered. And as Brandon will get into, Ascent also conducted a social cost of carbon analysis for all of the model scenarios. So I'll hand it over to Brandon next.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor Brotman. I'll talk about the modeling process briefly. So when we did the IRP modeling, we used Powersim, which is our, the software developed by Ascent Analytics. The modeling process essentially looks at three different types of models, the capacity expansion models, which are, it's a model that selects future resources based on the inputs that we put into the model, so things like cost of the resource, the physical characteristics of the resource, any sort of limitations on when we can build the resource, how much can we build it, if we put limits around that sometimes to kind of guide the model in the right direction. The second type of modeling would be resource adequacy. That's essentially looking at loss of load analysis. Obviously, you probably are familiar with Glendale Water &amp; Power's N minus one, minus one contingency planning. That's also a big part of the modeling, but when I'm talking about resource adequacy, I'm looking at it from a slightly different perspective, just to make sure that the load is being met by the existing resources on an hour-to-hour basis. And finally, production cost models, and that's really the type of simulation that most people are probably familiar with. That's when we step through Glendale's system on an hour-to-hour basis to see which resources are running. We get an idea of what, how the operation will play out in each of the scenarios, what the carbon emissions will look like, and what the costs would be. The capacity expansion models I mentioned are the models that select future resources based on the inputs that we put into the models. This list is a list of the resources that we put into the models for selection, geothermal, wind, solar, green hydrogen, small modular reactors, long-duration storage, lithium-ion storage, and the customer resources or distributed energy resources. That wasn't a selectable item, that was an item that we put in and kind of predetermined what would be in the models for that. Everything else, we said you can build this whenever, we set some limits on when it could, the first year it could be built, and then how much it could build. For example, geothermal, we set it to 50 megawatts because we didn't think it was realistic to try to build more than that, given the transmission constraints in the model. We required the resources to meet 60% RPS by 2030, and then 100% by 2035 or 2045, depending on kind of the timing there. For the clean energy part, the 60% RPS was not a limiting factor in the model because all of the scenarios easily surpassed 60% RPS by 2030. So really, it was, it came down to a matter of the timing. Do you, you know, if the model is requiring zero carbon items in the model, or if it's require, and what the timing would be for that. Just to give you a sense of kind of the long-duration storage that we modeled, this is an image from Form Energy's website. There are more than the two I list here that are developing long-duration storage. There currently aren't any long-duration storage projects in existence, but there's several companies that are innovating in this space and looking to bring long-duration storage to the market in the near future. So the good, the positive aspect of long-duration storage is that it provides dispatchable capacity, which is really the critical part of Glendale's model, that we need that dispatchable capacity in Glendale. And long-duration storage, when I say long duration, I'm talking on the order of days, so it can charge from renewable generation today, and then store that energy, and then discharge over an entire day or two-day or three-day period in the future as needed. So it's really that backstop to having a low solar period, a series of cloudy days, or a low wind period, and those things happen. So this is a good part to add to that model. The downside is that it requires a lot of land, and it's a low efficiency when we talk about the amount of energy that goes in compared to the amount of energy that comes out. So Form Energy states that their efficiencies are 40 to 45%, and that's a round-trip number. Currently, four-hour batteries, we think of as around 85 to 90% efficient, just to kind of give you that reference. Also, we limited long-duration storage in Glendale to 50 megawatts because of the land requirements. Form Energy says that it's about three megawatts can fit in an acre of land, so that would be about 17 acres of land needed to get 50 megawatts of long-duration storage. So we, that was kind of the ballpark figure that we decided to put a limit on. And then the manufacturing capacity in this space is still ramping up, but the producers think, for, at least for the iron-air batteries at Form, they're saying about 500 megawatts on an annual capacity basis that they will be able to manufacture. ESS, another company working in this space, is giving out similar numbers, so there's a lot of uncertainty. That's really the point. If we're talking about clean dispatchable generation, hydrogen is the clean dispatchable generation that comes up in the scenarios. We think that that's probably the most likely technology in this clean dispatchable space that will come to fruition currently. We don't have that option that's commercially viable today, but you know, this is a plan for the future. So as far as hydrogen goes, IPP, obviously you're aware of that, that's under development now, and that will burn 30% hydrogen when that comes online in 2025. And eventually, that will transition to a full 100% hydrogen resource is the plan in Utah. Getting hydrogen in Glendale will be a challenge. We will need infrastructure, we will need hydrogen pipelines to come to Glendale. There's currently some planning around that. The Angeles Link from SoCal Gas is under consideration, and obviously, LADWP is working with them and kind of planning this out, but it's uncertain at this point when, what that timing would be. And then nuclear small modular reactors, another possible clean dispatchable generation. The cost that we are assuming for SMRs is much higher than hydrogen, so those did not play a role in any of our models, but that was a consideration in our models. Production cost models, I mentioned earlier that that's really kind of the meat of the modeling. That's when we take the resources that the capacity expansion models provide, we put them into the mix, and then run the system, simulate the system over a period from 2023 to 2045, and we are able to get a sense of what would the carbon emissions be, how much clean energy would be generated, how much renewable energy would be generated, so those sorts of things. Just to make sure that we understand the California mandate as we were modeling them, the California mandate says that we need to be 100% clean by 2045, and that's really referring to the retail load. If you, if you look at Glendale's resources, there's about a 10% loss in power from the generation point to the load. So we assume that 90% clean is meeting the California mandate. That's different than zero carbon, which the scenarios, such as scenario two, scenario four, et cetera, that I'm sure you've read about, those have a zero-carbon target in them, whereas scenarios one and three were a clean target. And to summarize the scenarios, scenario one, the California policy, which is the scenario that was originally designed to match the California requirements going out into the future. The scenario ended up selecting adequate resources that it served 91% of the full load with renewable or clean energy by 2035. So you could say that it met the California mandate 10 years early, and is very, meets all of the other requirements from the California policy. It does keep the natural gas resources available, but the use is limited in that scenario. The scenarios that are red in color are all going fully clean, where the natural gas resources are retired or retrofitted and replaced with hydrogen resources. Scenarios one and four are the two kind of scenarios that receive the most attention, the most focus, so that's what I'll address here. But scenario, the difference, the differences between the two really lie in the fact that scenario four removes all of the natural gas in 2035 and replaces it with hydrogen generation. It also has increased assumptions for rooftop solar growth, well, customer-sided, I should say, solar generation, and energy efficiency adoption from Glendale customers and demand response. So it's a higher, much higher trajectories on the customer-sided resources compared to scenario one. Scenario one kind of maintains the historically observed trends and extrapolates those out. Both of these scenarios use the load forecast, the kind of the base load forecast is from the California Energy Commission. They publish load forecasts for all utilities in the state. They prefer that we use their load forecast in this modeling work, because at the end of the day, we have to submit our results to the CEC. So we adopted the CEC's load forecast with some adjustments. In both scenarios, we made an adjustment for known large load additions in 2028, so the loads increased there. And then, as I mentioned, in scenario one, the energy efficiency was based on the GWP goals for energy efficiency of about 1.8% reduction per year. We added that on top of the CEC's forecast. Scenario four, I believe it was 2.5% of energy efficiency reductions per year, and those that lasted 10 years and then declined after that. There were a few things that stood out. We call them key findings in the analysis. So the first one is that to transition to a fully carbon-free clean energy system, we will need some technological advancement. So some of the options to assist in achieving that would be the long-duration multi-day storage. As I pointed out earlier, that's not yet commercially available. They, there are several companies that are competing in this space to come up with options there, and there are pilot projects that are getting penned out currently so that we can start to kind of get some more data on it. We modeled that long-duration storage with the information that we have, which is, actually has turned out to be, to shift since we started the modeling. I had a meeting with Form Energy, and they've, they had reduced their round-trip efficiencies a bit, so we did model it a little bit high, but I don't think it was a big drop. Second, we have the medium-duration storage, which is eight-hour batteries. That is commercially available. I don't, there aren't any eight-hour storage batteries in California yet that I'm aware of, but they are, contracts have been signed, they're coming, so we, those are commercially available, they're just not widely installed yet at this point. And then the clean firm generation, and I mentioned hydrogen was what came out in the modeling. The other options that we considered would be carbon capture and underground sequestration, which I label CCS, CCUS, excuse me, CCUS. We have renewable natural gas, and then the small modular reactors. And really, one of these options, we had to put in the model, because if we didn't have something that was firm and dispatchable, we just weren't able to get the reliability levels that we needed in the models. Unfortunately, none of these are commercially available, but there is a lot of movement. There's significant funding for hydrogen, it's getting a big push from the federal government currently. California is a hydrogen hub, so there is money being used to develop it. We know that SoCal Gas is, I wouldn't say developing, I would say considering a hydrogen link to Los Angeles. That, where they are in that process is uncertain to me, I haven't been able to find a lot of information on that. But we think that just due to the landscape currently, green hydrogen is the most likely winner in this set of firm dispatchable generation, so that's what the model went with. And to think about kind of the needs of the system, I'm showing a snapshot of the system in 2035, and this is from an N minus one, minus one contingency perspective. That table on the right shows what Glendale, what we say Glendale can count on from each of those, each resource in the mix in 2035. When the PDCI line, so one of the major transmission lines is down, and then the south, southern transmission line, STS line, is down. Those are the two largest contingencies in the Glendale network. So when those two lines are down, we still have 113 megawatts of import capability, that's the top row, and then below that, you can see demand response is eight megawatts, the city solars 10 megawatts, et cetera, et cetera. We go down to totaling all of that, we get 370 megawatts. Peak load is 416 megawatts in 2035, so we're a 40-megawatt deficit already. In the scenario one, we add more storage in Glendale to kind of firm up that capacity. We also have storage on the external sides of the transmission lines to cover that 40 megawatts. In scenario four, you'll notice that the three gas units, Magnolia, ICEs, and Grayson Nine, total 137 megawatts, so we have to add an additional, we added 135 megawatts of hydrogen generation to the model, plus the long-duration storage and the eight-hour storage to bring that back up. Also, in the scenario four, though, we had more demand Also, in the scenario four, though, we had more demand response, so we didn't, so that 40-megawatt deficit was less due to the demand response. And then the third finding is that, based on, you know, all the models need resources in a constrained system. So solar just wasn't really selected. We did force solar in because solar is obviously a very important resource in Southern California, and it's the most commonly available resource in Southern California. So we did put solar in the model. It was not selected by the capacity expansion models. The capacity expansion needed, wanted more resources with capacity value, and solar just didn't foot the bill for that. So geothermal, the scenarios really liked the geothermal. They liked the out-of-state wind that we added to the model from New Mexico because that had a high capacity factor day and night. So that, along with the storage, all of the scenarios added quite a bit of storage as well, and then the scenarios that replaced the gas all had hydrogen. This is a summary of the results, showing the new resource capital costs on the first line for each of the scenarios, and then the operating costs, followed by the total costs. We just add those two together. You can see that the big difference in the new resource capital costs was whether or not we're adding the hydrogen or not, and then the timing of that hydrogen. So if we push it back beyond 2035, the costs come down. All of these values are a net present value calculated from 2024 to 2045, so a 21-year net present value calculation. If we look down at the bottom line, that's where we see the percent clean in 2035, and the scenario one is hitting 91% clean. So it's, you know, it is very high. Scenario four, obviously, is much higher. We went well above load with scenario four to 129%. That's driven heavily by the amount of customer solar that's in the model. Customer solar starts at 26 megawatts, and in scenario four, it increased to 90 megawatts by 2028 to hit that 10% of single-family homes assumption. And then it continued to increase at a much slower rate afterwards, but that really drove a lot of that excess generation. There was a lot of storage in scenario four. There was 10 megawatts of customer-sighted storage, for example, and I'll show on the graph here in a second how much storage, but scenario four had a lot of energy storage to absorb all of that excess generation. If we look at the capacity, you can see scenarios one and four, the, if you want to focus on those two scenarios in this graph, scenario four goes well higher than scenario one, and a lot of that is that light yellow at the top, which is the behind-the-meter solar. And I'm calling it behind-the-meter solar in this graph, but that's really the customer-sighted solar. The dark blue kind of in the middle, that's the amount of energy storage in each of the scenarios, and you can see the energy storage makes up quite a large portion of the capacity in 2035 in each of these scenarios. Scenario one has the gray at the bottom that scenario four doesn't have, and scenario four, that's replaced with the green for the hydrogen. If we look at it from an energy perspective, we can see that in the energy mix in scenario one, that gray part, the gas, does get squeezed down because it's, the gas resources are running much less frequent. They're providing more of that backstop for reliability and less of a general energy resource. The one exception is Magnolia. Magnolia has joint ownership with six different public utilities, so Magnolia has a must-run requirement in the model. Without that must-run requirement, the gas would have been much lower in scenario one. Scenario four has no gas. It does have the hydrogen, it has, you know, so we see how everything else above that gas in scenario one is the clean energy, and scenario four, that whole line is clean If we follow each of the scenarios from a carbon emissions and a cost and a renewable and clean energy trajectory starting today and going out into the future, what we find is that they're all very similar for the first six years or so. And here we're showing the carbon emissions. They start really high, and that's driven by Intermountain Power, which is a coal-fired power plant, and it retires in 2025. So that initial drop in carbon emissions is due solely to the retirement of IPP and its replacement with a blend of hydrogen and natural gas. And then as we move along, we can start to see the divergence, starting in 2026, going out to 2024, you can see how the lines are starting to fan out a little bit. And then in 2035 is where we have the obvious jump in the carbon emissions, where two of the scenarios go to zero because all of the gas gets replaced by hydrogen, and then those lines kind of drop. About 100,000 tons of carbon emissions kind of flat going out to 2045. After about 2035, that's almost all from Magnolia. If we look at an RPS, which is the wind, the solar, geothermal, and biomass energy in the models, and I guess the small hydro from Titan, if we add those up and look at kind of the trajectory of the RPS-eligible energy on the left graph, and then the clean energy on the right graph, which includes the RPS resources in addition to the hydrogen and the large hydro like Hoover, we can see that the clean energy, obviously, the scenario four is higher than all the other scenarios, and scenario one is kind of, you know, hitting that 90% or so by 2035 and remaining around that 90% level going out into the future. If we look at costs, once again, from 2023, or 24, I guess, until about 2028, the costs are very similar. Once we get to 2028, we see an increase in costs, and that's driven by an increase in load in the models because of, that's when the new loads come online in the model. It's about 12 megawatts of high load, a large load that comes into the model. So that's where you see that jump in the annual costs. After that jump, in 2029, we start to see the divergence from the scenarios adding resources in different, at different timings. And then in, obviously, in 2035, when the hydrogen resources start to come online, we really see the changes in the cost. I'm going to turn it back over to Drew to talk about the STAG surveys.
Thanks, Brandon. So I'll speak to the surveys that we conducted after the modeling was complete. So we conducted two surveys on STAG's preferred scenario. The first was conducted before the GWP Commission meeting during the week of November 3rd to November 6th, and survey two was conducted after the final town hall after November 28th through December 4th. The first survey was completed before final cost results were completed and validated. So the first survey was completed with the intention of getting survey results for the GWP Commission meeting, but upon validation, an error in the hydrogen costs was identified and the, and operating costs were calculated. So those were updated and presented to the STAG. Post that, a second survey was conducted just to capture any changes there might have been following survey one. In terms of survey setup, the approach that was taken for both surveys was to ask STAG members to identify their top three choices across the six scenarios, and once they selected their top three, they were asked to allocate 100 points amongst those top three to indicate preference across the top three scenarios that they selected. They could choose to divide them equally, they could choose to pick one scenario and give that 100 points, and the other two, zero points. So the intent there was not only to get a ranking or identification of preferred, of top scenarios, but also preference within, within that, or ranking or preference within the top selection. In both surveys, scenario one, the California policy scenario, was STAG's preference, but there's obviously variances in the surveys, and we will get into that in the next couple of slides. So survey results, and I'm going to, I'm going to show the results of the first question, which is the selection of the top three scenarios that we asked for. So in survey one, nine STAG participants selected scenario one and scenario five within their top three. Scenario four and scenario six had six. When we did survey two, scenario one had eight people selecting it in their top three. Scenario four had seven, so an increase of one in scenario four, a decrease of one in scenario one. Scenario five maintained nine. So across both surveys, scenario five ended up being the most popular selection for top three. It gets more interesting, of course, when we go into the points ranking. So if we look at comparison of points allocations between the two surveys, starting with scenario ones, sorry, survey one, excuse me. Scenario one received the most points at 530. Scenario two, scenario four received the second most at 375, and five was third. If we look at survey two, again, scenario one received the most points at 525. Scenario four increased significantly by about 100 points to 480, and scenario five, again, came in third, as it did in the first survey, at 170. So just at a high level, talking through these results, clearly in survey two, most members concentrated their points more heavily around the two preferred scenarios, scenario one, California one, and scenario four, STAG one. And those were the ones that, of course, received the most points in the first survey. In the second survey, fewer members allocated their points to the other scenarios, so two, five, and six, the points for two, five, and six decreased, and the amount of points selected for the top two increased. This may reflect, it could be multiple factors. It could be new cost information that was presented by the ASCEND team, or it could be a shift in voting strategy, given results of the first survey. But regardless of the reasons behind the shift, and also the new information from the ASCEND team, in both surveys, ultimately, the first scenario, California one, was chosen as the, as a preferred scenario, chosen as a preferred scenario. Just wanting to get a little bit of members' perspectives as they voted, so we asked, after both surveys, for members to comment on their perspective and opinion. So I'm just going to read this quickly. Those who preferred scenario one highlighted concerns about affordability and technology availability. GWP one, following California policy, is the most cost-effective rate pairs. We have real challenges on affordability, it will get worse over the next few years. We have to balance costs while trying to make progress towards transition to clean energy. Most of the expensive scenarios rely on high-risk new technologies that may or may not be built or will underperform. We must remain grounded with technologies that are available today to achieve our goals. We have to face affordability and reliability realities in front of us at the moment. Across both surveys, members who preferred scenario four, which is the STAG one scenario, as Brandon talked about, the more aggressive scenario for customer resources, demand response, and energy efficiency. The participants expressed the need for faster transition with respect to clean energy, and urgency of, of course, the climate crisis. Some comments were a net-zero target of 2045 is no longer acceptable. Future costs are largely fictional at this time, so we need to go for the greatest reduction of carbon by 2030. I generally chose the STAG scenarios over the GWP scenarios because they get us to true carbon-free. They're not that much more expensive, and they result in significantly lower carbon emissions, particularly STAG one, which is scenario four. Technology improvements will reduce the cost of the 2035 scenarios. We need to act now to start moving our city to clean energy. So that's kind of wanting to paint a picture of the both sets of surveys and some of the member comments, STAG member comments from both sets. And next, I think I'll hand it over to Scott.
As is kind of pointed out, the preferred scenario is GWP one, the California policy. We believe this has the proper balance between reliability, sustainability, and affordability. The California policy scenario provides long-term viability adaptable to future innovations in changing energy technologies. It also satisfies the state requirement, both in use of renewable resources and in supplying requisite support. The California policy scenario identifies that we can achieve 91% clean energy by 2035. I know we keep talking about 100%, and I know that's everyone's goal, and it is ultimately our goal to hit 100% by 2035, but the understanding that we would achieve 91% by 2035 should amaze you. This is not a simple thing. If we can get to that, that is impressive. While the scenario does not explicitly meet the city council's goal of 100% zero carbon by 2035, this is still a significant achievement. Acknowledging that the last 10% is the most challenging and cost-prohibitive aspect aligns with common understanding that the final steps towards complete decarbonization often require innovation solutions, innovative solutions, and cutting-edge technologies. In fact, several studies have been performed recognizing this concern and suggesting that preparing for possibilities, as well as allowing for time and technologies to fill the gap, may be prudent. Following represents a few of those studies. We'll start off with NREL. The NREL study, this is the same entity that brought us the LA 100. They recognize the significant concerns obtaining the last 10%. In this same document, they identify four critical hurdles to decarbonizing power sector: dramatic acceleration of electrification and increased efficiency and demand. Basically, you need to reach much higher levels of efficiency in order to realize cost-effective transitions. A new energy infrastructure installed rapidly throughout the country. For Glendale, that means changing out an electrical system that was designed over 100 years ago to flow safely in one direction. And expanded clean energy manufacturing and supply chains: more raw materials, more manufacturing, more trained labor, all the things directly affected by COVID. We don't have more of those things, we actually have less. And it requires more continued research and development. More money, more time. Science Direct is a peer-reviewed website that has multiple published documents, including JUUL, which is the name of the document, where the article that is quoted above came from. In this article, they modeled six potential strategies to address the last 10%. The article is quite an interesting read, actually discusses several issues that we had previously discussed with the council. But just to highlight it, they say, "The challenges of achieving 100% carbon-free grid are disproportionately driven by the difficulty of solving approximately the last 10%. There are significant uncertainties and unknowns with all six strategies reviewed. No option matching the, quote, 'fictional ideal one,'" which is in table one, "and no single strategy is the clear superior choice under all circumstances. If the last 10% strategies ultimately fail to succeed, then emissions reductions will fall short of 100%, but will still be significant. After all, a system still needs to reduce emissions by 90% before the last 10% strategies are truly required." The next one is SB 100, Joint Agency Report, and this is from the California Energy Commission. This reference is a publication posted in September of 2021 for the CEC, where they recognized the need for gas capacity to maintain reliability because it provides firm dispatchable energy. It also recognizes that, in time, innovation in potential zero-carbon firm resources could reduce the need for gas generation. Some of the quotes from that document, "Gas capacities retain for reliability needs, but cost reductions and innovation in zero-carbon firm..." but cost reductions and innovation in zero-carbon firm resources and storage may reduce gas capacity needs going forward. Natural gas capacity is the most economic option to provide capacity for reliability needs with current resource assumptions and demand scenarios. Cost reductions and innovation in zero-carbon firm resources and storage may reduce the amount of gas generation needed." That kind of ties in the concept about why hydrogen is the leading firm dispatchable resource that we identify in our models. Next one, it's a quote from SMUD's IRP. For those who aren't familiar, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, one of the largest municipal utilities in California, they have a very aggressive IRP. In fact, their goal is zero carbon by 2030, and they're going full-tilt. They have, there's a lot of things that are different about SMUD, but there are some similarities to us. SMUD is a much larger territory than Glendale. They have more space to build within their system, and they have a more aggressive goal, like I stated, 2030. They also emphasize a method utilizing proven resources that will get them to 90% and clarify that they will conduct additional research before committing to the final 10%. Finally, the LA 100. This is from the executive summary for the LA 100. Even they recognize, even that document recognizes that firm dispatchable resources are currently required to meet the final 10%. While the final statement alludes to hydrogen, LA's fallback is to use natural gas when the conventional renewable resources can't be met. Got it? And I'll read a quote from it. "The LA 100 scenario shows similar cost increases until approximately 80% to 90% renewable energy. Pathways diverge with differences in the technologies deployed to meet the last 10% to 20% of energy demand that cannot be easily served by wind, solar, and conventional storage technologies, and to maintain reliability in the face of extreme events. The resources used to help meet this last 10% and maintain reliability can produce local air emissions, particularly when based on combustion generation." Staff endorses and recommends California policy scenario as it represents a green option by definition of the state. It achieves 91% zero-carbon energy by 2035. It was selected most by STAG in two different surveys. It is consistent with GWP's clean energy progress. And we can take a look at the chart that's up there. GWP has demonstrated unwavering dedication to clean energy, consistently surpassing ambitious clean energy targets and achieving remarkable milestones. Our commitment to sustainability has been at the forefront of our efforts, ensuring a delicate balance between reliability, affordability, and environmental responsibility. The chart on this slide depicts GWP's persistent clean energy progress throughout the past decade. You'll notice that it's not going down, it's only going up. Staff recommends the council approve the IRP as it stands. Going forward, GWP has an action plan. We continue to sustain but look to improve our efforts to procure clean energy resources like wind, solar, geothermal, and storage. We're going to explore and engage in power purchase agreements that align with the IRP goals. Continue discussions and decisions focused on reducing emissions for Magnolia Power Plant with co-owners, as well as accelerating the transition of that plant to low-carbon technologies. And to continue the integration of distributed energy resources, such as rooftop solar, energy storage, demand response. Look for innovative models to engage GWP customers and businesses in their programs, like the PPA that we're currently working on in system. Gain insight from the Intermountain Power Plant's conversion to hydrogen. We really want to understand how hydrogen's going to make sense. Continue to collaborate with LA DWP and the City of Burbank on transmission and renewable resource development. And continue to work to meet the council's goals of 100% zero carbon by 2035. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is go to the speakers first. Are my colleagues okay with that? Okay. So we'll call up the speakers. I think we've got 15 cards and one on the phone. Okay. So we'll give it five minutes, and then we won't take any more phone calls. Okay? All right? And we'll start with Karen Kwak.
Hi, I'm Karen Kwak. Excuse me. I was a member of STAG, but of course, I'm here with my own opinions and not representing that of the group. Okay, so that word you had fun with the last time we discussed, the IRP, aspirational. Okay, that actually came from me. I started that. Because at the first STAG meeting back in July, we had a discussion of whether to hit the city's 2035 target or the state's 2045 target, and I described the city's target as aspirational. Why is that? It's because unless we implement and enforce plans, that it remains an aspirational goal. For example, when we set targets for our kids, as parents or as teachers, we want you to read X number of books a month. That is a goal we want them to reach. We're not necessarily going to penalize them if they don't hit it. But if you want to take, if you want us to take this 2035 goal seriously, you need to take steps to implement and enforce this plan, and the IRP is a great place to start that. Okay, I'm going to point out that of the 13 STAG members, only six of us, less than half, consistently voted to hit that 2035 target. That means the majority of members did not find it necessary to follow city policy. Okay, that's point number one. Point number two is, you know, as much as I love to play with words, I've actually always been better with numbers. So I'm actually going to ask you to look at the numbers this way. A lot of people become alarmed when they see the dollar cost. I'm going to remind you that what we're trying to do here is we're trying to price technologies that do not yet exist. When we project five years out, we have a fairly good idea of what we're working with, but beyond that, 10, 20 years, it's, I'm going to give an example. It's like saying, in 10 or 20 years, a little blue man from Mars is going to give us a great new technology. Now, if I say it that way, you can laugh, but for some reason, if you add a number to it and say, "In 10 or 20 years, a little blue man from Mars is going to sell us a great new technology, and it's going to cost $100 million." For some reason, when people hear that number, especially when they're not comfortable with numbers, they take it more seriously, and they assign it greater credibility. I'm asking you not to do that, because it's actually a second layer of fiction on top of the first. Now, it's entirely possible, given the last 20 years, that the next 20 years will see advances in technology, but we don't know exactly what they're going to be or where they're going to come from, much less how much they're going to cost. So actually, my focus here was not focusing on the dollar cost, because that is absolutely going to change over time. That I focused on the tons of carbon that we're going to eliminate, because that is actually a much more solid number. When we get clean technologies, we're going to eliminate this amount of carbon, and those costs will change, so I'm asking you to view it in that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's please hold the clapping. Steve Bullock.
I'm going to make it a little taller here for me. Hi, Steve Bullock, Royal Canyon area of City of Glendale. I'm here to express support for the IRP as written, with option one as the preferred option. I think having a plan that, I've got to read my notes, that meets the 2045 state mandates while also expressing support and commitment to the city council's 2035 goals is the way to go. It seems smart, it seems prudent. Cost, reliability, and environmental progress all have to be considered in the plan. Our utility in the past has consistently meet or has beaten the state's RPS requirements, and there's no reason to think that they'll do anything less in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Gish.
So Carol is going to cede her time to me in case I run over my three minutes.
Okay, Carol Fadera. Okay.
Mayor Brotman, city council members. First of all, I commend you for your unanimous vote in August 2022 for 100% clean energy by 2035, as well as 10% solar and storage adoption for GWP customers. Unfortunately, GWP is not recommending a plan which meets city council's recommendation resolution. The first slide is one that you've already seen, and it shows that GWP one does not go to zero emissions even in 2045. It's still got about 40% of the emissions at the peak. When ASCEND talked about that slide, they said that that was due to Magnolia. If it weren't Magnolia, it would be due to the Wartzillas or Unit 9, or they'd have to have hydrogen also. So somehow or another, they're going to have to fill in that gap if Magnolia shuts off, and those emissions will be there if it's not with hydrogen. The drop-off in the early years for all the scenarios, the first couple of years, but especially for scenario one, is mainly due to GWP contracts. So GWP has done a good job of searching for clean energy outside Glendale, but not a good job of searching for clean energy inside Glendale. The next slide shows the resources for just these two scenarios, GWP one and STAG one, for 2035 and 2045, showing substantial differences between the two plans in most, in a lot of the categories. Specifically, look at the behind-the-meter solar. GWP one assumes the current 27 megawatts, 2.7% of customers, only increases by less than 50% by 2035, while STAG one assumes 10% adoption numbers from city council's resolution and has 98 megawatts, more than two and a half times that of GWP one. The storage numbers also are dramatically different. The storage under GWP one is due to the Best at Grayson and the Elan storage, that it's not even in Glendale, or most of that's not in Glendale. The final slide has, shows the costs for these two plans, using numbers from the draft IRP. If one includes both the social cost of carbon and the potential market sales, the two plans cost the same within 10%. And as Karen said, we don't know these costs that accurately. It's well within the margin of error and the many assumptions in these numbers. Note that Los Angeles also has a 2035 plan, assuming hydrogen for the later years. Glendale can work with LA to accomplish our similar goals. The big difference between the two scenarios for the next five years is that scenario four will force Glendale to immediately plan and execute scaling up internal to Glendale clean energy, including rooftop solar, solar on city sites, and more storage, as well as demand reduction and energy efficiency. And in five years, Glendale can reassess its progress for the next IRP. If city council votes for scenario one, it will be business as usual, with Glendale concentrating as far as Glendale resources internal to Glendale, mostly on Grayson and Shoal. The climate can't wait. Please uphold your resolution and vote for scenario four, STAG one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Please, 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 please. Elise Calphay.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council members. GWP's key finding, number one, was that the clean energy transition requires technology that is not yet available broadly. They named quite a few that are not yet commercially available. Then, we should push for as much current clean technology as we can get now in order to get ahead of the game, and scenario four is the plan that focuses the most resources on what we can do now to get to Glendale's clean energy goals. So I urge you to vote for scenario four. Thank you.
Thank you. David Eisenberg, followed by Jack Walworth.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council members. My name is David Eisenberg. I've been a Glendale resident, homeowner since 1985. I'm here as the chair of the Sierra Club Verdugo Hills Group, and we are urging you to vote for STAG one or scenario four. The council voted to have, all of you unanimously, to have 100% clean energy by 2035. There is a plan that was part of the IRP, which is STAG one, to get to 100% clean energy in 2035. This is council direction. By GWP pushing scenario one, they're saying, even though you've given it a direction, we can't, we can't, or we won't do it. If they think, they're saying in their speech, "Well, we're going to, this is just a planning document, we can get to 20, we can get to, we can try for 100% clean energy in 2035. We'll do the, do the plan that says we'll get to 100% clean energy in 2035. If you have to adjust it, you can adjust it. You're going to do this again in five years. You can make that kind of adjustment." There's another thing they told you. They said, "We can get to 91% clean energy, and that's equivalent in practice to 100% clean energy." Mathematically, that's not true. It doesn't happen. 91, if you believe that that happens, I'll give you $91, you give me back $100. It mathematically isn't going to happen. So we're urging you to look at the future of, you know, put the pressure on to get 100% clean energy by 2035, as you asked. And as far as cost goes, you know, the numbers look pretty similar to me, but we were assured during the COSA process that the money from the COSA would pay for all of the scenarios. Remember, I asked you if you could wait for this process before you approved that cost, and GWP said, yes, all these scenarios are affordable. So thank you very much for your time, and...
Good night. Okay, Jack Walworth. And after Jack will be Alice Mopin.
Alice has agreed to cede her time in case I go over. What is, what is the time, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay. I'll probably be under.
Well, try not to.
So, hey, everyone. Thank you for letting us speak. After five months of learning all about our public utility from all the experts here, it feels like we went back in time. Despite a majority of the STAG opting for scenarios for less than 2045, GWP chose one of the most conservative plans. Of course, this is my own opinion and not that of STAG. But one thing I learned really well is how to read numbers and not be intimidated by them. GWP puts out, says that they, we put out 250 million, 250,000 million tons of CO2 every year. That's 476,000 tons every minute. We're paying for this in real dollars. A commonly accepted number for climate disasters is $16 million per hour. That's $267,000 per minute. GWP asks us to do the minimum in achieving our clean energy goals. They say it gives them the flexibility. If we stick with their plan, we'll still be pumping out massive amounts of CO2 in 2035 and 2045. What progress have we made in the last five years towards a clean energy utility? Despite what we have heard tonight, it sure seems to me we're moving backwards. The meetings with STAG and with the public town halls were a positive step in the right direction for public engagement, but the end result shows how we need to keep going. If we work together as a community, we can really build a public utility that understands our deep commitment to the future of clean energy in real, concrete ways, such as energy efficiency, demand response... in real, concrete ways, such as energy efficiency, demand response, local rooftop solar and storage, and a better understanding of how we can make a difference. This is a critical next step. There's been a lot of talk about the extreme expense of achieving the final 10% of carbon-free energy. But if we can commit to 90% by 2030, that's a great start. But let's get going on the first 10%. Solar on 10% of our rooftops would be a great start, don't you think? In these three minutes that I've been talking, we've continued to spew out another 1.4 million tons of CO2, and the climate disasters have cost us another 800,000. And I ask you all, is this a cost-effective future? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Paul Berelsheimer.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, council members. My name's Paul Berelsheimer. I've been a resident and homeowner in Glendale for well over 30 years in the aforementioned Adams Hill neighborhood. There are many issues that are important to me, things that I think we need to do to improve our society, but the climate emergency is by far the most urgent of all of them. If we don't stop the climate from heating up, none of the rest of the issues will matter because the earth will become basically uninhabitable. We are already well into a cycle of feedback effects which are going to start building on each other to accelerate the warming faster than we can predict. No one's solution will be enough to solve this problem. To prevent the worst effects, we need to address it from all possible angles as quickly as possible, in our individual behaviors, institutional actions, and governmental policies, all the way from international cooperation down to municipal-level actions. We all need to consider the climate in every decision that we make, especially when we are acting on an institutional level. And the most important of all the various ways we must address this crisis is to stop burning fossil fuels as quickly as we possibly can. Even if there are added costs to doing this, those costs will be far less than those of letting our climate go out of balance and out of control. Our elected city council has taken this seriously and acted responsibly in enacting a unanimous resolution from August 2022 for 100% clean energy and 10% rooftop solar and storage by 2035, reflecting the will of the majority of Glendale residents. It is incumbent upon the city to act according to this resolution and choose scenario four, also known as the STAG one scenario, with a heavy emphasis on the DER portion of the plan. Any emphasis on hydrogen as a clean fuel gives me some trepidation. As has been mentioned over and over, it does not exist anywhere yet. It's, there's been no mention of where the energy would come from to electrolyze green hydrogen and to compress and transport it. And it would be terrible to end up in a situation where we're dependent on hydrogen, which is reformed from natural gas, because it's not actually available from green sources. That process, we know, releases even more greenhouse gases than burning natural gas does. As I've said here before, subsidizing residential and commercial rooftop solar and storage is one of the most cost-effective options we have. It doesn't require increased transmission capacity, and the technology exists now, and the costs of it decrease every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Limone.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Brotman and council members. I am a Glendale resident, and I am here to say that you should support scenario four. That gets us to 100% clean energy in 2035 rather than 2045 because in terms of global emissions and warming, every tenth of a percent matters. And so that additional 10% really matters. And in terms of the cost, we have to think about not only the cost in dollars, but also the cost to public health and the increase in natural disasters and all of the impacts of continuing to release more emissions. When, and we need to act with a sense of urgency around finding solutions, and having a goal of 2035 will force that sense of urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, council members. I rise in support of the STAG one scenario four. My organization, I represent the Glendale Environmental Coalition as well as the Los Angeles chapter of the Climate Reality Project. I'm the Legislative Committee Chair. What I'm missing in this conversation is a discussion of natural gas. We talk about costs, we talk about renewable energy, we talk about technologies that don't exist, that may be difficult to, to project the costs of these, these technologies that are not yet developed. But no one has talked about the health costs of fracking natural gas from Canada and Wyoming, putting it in a pipeline and sending it down to California, to Glendale, so that we can burn it for 15 or 20 years. Let me talk to you about the, the damage that, that we will do as Glendale city residents by fracking natural gas and piping it in pipelines to California so that we can have clean, so we can have natural gas-fired electricity, exposes the communities where the gas is fracked, where the gas is transported in pipelines through communities in Canada and the United States, exposes all of these individuals to, to really serious, serious health problems. When you open up these fracked wells with high-pressure steam, you, you run the risk of poisoning the water tables. Then you put it in a pipeline, you could easily have leaks and emissions from the transmission of the natural gas to Glendale. And then once you burn the natural gas here in Glendale, you put, you produce all kinds of, of chemical carcinogens that will poison the lungs of the children of Glendale. Please consider the health of our community and support scenario four in the STAG one. And let's get rid of natural gas. Let's transition. If we need to, to rely on technology that's not, let's put our, our money and our effort and our time and our ingenuity to protect the citizens of this nation and this planet, because relying on, on dirty natural gas energy exposes the communities that where it's fracked, where it's transported through pipelines, and where it's burned. It, it exposes those communities and those children to really serious public health risks. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Karen Cockler. And Karen will be followed by Monica Campagna.
Okay. Good evening, honorable city council members. I'm going to talk with my hands because that's easier for me. And I was a member of the STAG, and the opinion I express is my own. And I fought very hard, I tried my best, to talk about community solar, solar on buildings, solar vertical on rooftops and on houses on the hillsides, and get in as much local production of solar as possible. Because that's something that we know, this technology exists. It's, there is a price tag to it, and people becoming producers here, from homeowners to industrial roofs that could have the, and the city buildings could have solar panels on their buildings. We would reduce so much more and reduce the overall need for outside energy coming in, which is the model from GWP. So the STAG one, even though it's the best model out there, is still not what we could achieve. It doesn't only go to 10% of solar. We could do so much more than just 10%. What I'm asking you is to think outside of the box, think outside of how things have been done to really address the emergency climate situation that we are facing and the health of the future. And what Pasadena did last night was they were also presented with a 2045 for the longest time by their PWP, but because of the strong community support and council, city council really understanding what's at stake, they last night voted for 2030, carbon-free and zero carbon by 2030. And I implore you to do the same, and I'm really advocating for looking at two more scenarios, to not vote on anything if you have to, other than tonight saying, we're not going for STAG one, is an option two, but please bring us two more models with way more solar. So then you can count on the expenses. And you do not have to pay high price for the solar producers here in town. You can give them credit towards when they needed, the producers, they get the credit at night. So you're saving so much more, because right now, there's a 39% increase of cost coming from overpaying the solar producers, and that's only on the 10%. So you can save so much more money as a city if you go with known and proven technologies and the individual battery storage, of course, with the solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Campagna, followed by Anita Quinones Gabrielian.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Brotman, and city staff. I'm here simply to support your new unanimous vision for a Glendale running on 100% clean energy by 2035, with 10% of customers here adopting solar and storage. Please vote for scenario four, which outlines our intention to achieve that vision. This plan does the most to both decrease emissions within this next decade, which is what the world must do to meet our climate goals, and, as many have said, and our local utility has said as well, build local resilience with current technologies. Please do not choose a plan that still has 140 megawatts of gas as a resource in 2045. Please hold your vision and ask our utility to put this intention in writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anita Quinones Gabrielian, followed by Cole Bazemore.
Mayor Dan Brotman, members of the city council, Mr. Rubi Galanian and staff, and especially today, the GWP staff who is working on the IRP, and the members of STAG. We have, over the last five months, worked very hard, and thank you. With your staff's help, you've helped us climb this very steep learning curve and try to understand and bring an objective view. I also want to thank you for reaching out to diverse sectors of the community, which I don't think had been done before. So that is wonderful. You invited the Glendale Latino Association, and I'm honored to be here representing them. I was sitting alongside the Armenian National Committee, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, the Glendale Environmental Coalition, many other groups as well. And I want to, I want to reiterate that you should listen to the work, the good work that has been done with STAG, with your Glendale Water and Power. And I'm here to support their recommendation for GWP one California policy. GWP one California policy is based on some of the good work that you've already done. We're already trying to get to clean energy before the California policy. And GWP one is working on that foundation. The decisions you've made so far to not implement additional coal, to cut it back, to improve solar, et cetera, they are good decisions. GWP one has this year's five-year look at a 20-year IRP, because that's what it is. This is a, what do you call it? This is today. It's a snapshot in time with what we know. What do we know? We have 2.37% residential roof solar. STAG one has a very unrealistic solar percentage going to 10% in the next few years, when it's taken many years to get to 2.37. They also have a 2.50 efficiency rating, where at the highest, I think Glendale was at 1.87 efficiency rating and no one else. We were number one in the entire region. So, but they, there are unrealistic assumptions built in to STAG one that make the lines look very good. GWP one is realistic. It, it takes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Cole Bazemore, and then Alan Dish.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, council members. My name is Cole Bazemore, and I'm a Commissioner on the Sustainability Commission. These words tonight, though, are my own and are not representative of the commission. I'm here to ask that you reject the proposed 2024 GWP draft IRP that uses scenario one, the scenario one model, and that you instead request GWP to reissue the IRP using the scenario four model. Scenario four is the right approach. It bolsters energy resilience by increasing local resources like rooftop solar and battery energy storage. It also eliminates 10 years or more of emissions that would continue past 2035 with scenario one. Yes, decarbonizing sooner may cost more money, but is that not worth these benefits? As already mentioned, there is significant uncertainty in the cost projections for clean energy technology. As demand increases, supply will catch up and costs will come down. Just this year, the IEA, International Energy Agency, reported that globally, factories are already being built to produce every year over 1,000 gigawatts of solar and 10,000 gigawatt-hours of batteries by 2035. GWP makes the argument that decarbonizing the last 10% of the power system is the most difficult, and they reference six studies that confirm this challenge. And yet, these same studies talk about cost-effective strategies and proven foundations to reduce emissions by 90%. What this sounds like to me is that GWP is simply taking the wait-and-see approach and is not willing to launch any initiatives or pilot-test new technology. Is GWP not up to the challenge? As mentioned, SMUD, they're going full-tilt. Are we not willing to do the same here in Glendale? I want to end with a note about the 2023 United Nations Climate Change Conference, or COP28. I'm sure you're all aware of that. What we witnessed from our delegates was an abysmal failure to reach a consensus on how to deal with fossil fuels. I admit, I expected more from this conference, but I understand that at the end of the day, it's through councils such as yourself where change really happens. You are the ones that get to decide that enough is enough and that it's time to phase out fossil fuels. In 2022, this council unanimously voted to support the goal of achieving 100% clean energy no later than 2035. If you're truly committed to that goal, please reject this draft IRP. Thank you.
Alan Dish. And our last card is from Reineer Rubin.
Mayor Brotman, city council, city staff, good evening. My name's Alan Dish. It's an honor to be here. I am not a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, so you may all sit down if, if you'd like, but I consider myself observer member, let's say. I did have some previous questions, which were addressed earlier by Karen Quok about costs, so I'd like to read them anyway. Without thorough empirical studies on energy consumption, blanket increases in utilities might be unjust. Who, rather, what bracket of income earners is responsible for the most energy consumption? Is the proportion of increased payment divided by income the same across all citizens of Glendale, and so on? So you see my point. If energy consumption is asymmetric, wouldn't this be unjust? That's just a basic point, I'm sure others have mentioned. But allow me to conclude, just in a, not so much pessimist way, but another question about ecology, which I take very seriously. We will still need a global approach. You remember two years ago, or when, there was the big heat dome above northwestern United States, southwestern Canada, like Seattle, Vancouver? And, okay, these were areas that are already relatively wealthy, environmentally responsible. The problem was rather the global circulation of air, so, of, of air currents. That's all I want to maybe mention in a problematic way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it Reineer?
Reineer Rubin.
Rubin, okay. Reineer Rubin. And then we'll go to the phone calls.
Thank you, Mayor Brotman and council members. I just want to speak on some of the initiatives around reaching 2035 100% clean energy and, you know, the options that were provided by the GWP representatives. You know, if that is a real priority, we actually have the solution today. And it's not a fictional technology that we're waiting for. It's solar PV and it's rooftop PV. And there is just one single issue and reason why adoption hasn't climbed at the rate that we would have hoped for. Everyone has incentives, the permit process is expedited. The problem is accessibility. There's not a platform, there's not a place for people to access solar panels to get the services that they desire. And I'm here on behalf of Carbon Pledge, where a platform for the clean energy movement, a mobile app that will put the tools in the hands of consumers and residents of Glendale. So I believe that we can help be a solution for this movement and to actually expedite the clean energy process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We have four callers. Our first caller is Mike Borisov. Mike, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Borisov, and I'm one of the STAG members. I, of course, am speaking for myself. I first want to thank everyone involved in the long and energy-intensive process. Now, I do want to critique the STAG for lack of diversity. I want to preface by saying that I do believe that GWP tries their best to find different types of people, but there's still much left to be desired in terms of diverse thought on the panel. My biggest issue is the lack of age diversity. I believe I am the only person under 40 in the STAG, one out of 14 or so individuals. In comparison, the population in Glendale is at least several thousand in that demographic, and becoming younger by the year. I'm not saying all elderly people think the same way. They don't. We have some amazing and outstanding older individuals who are environmentalists on the panel, and they are just as energetic and engaged as any of the youth. However, naturally, older people will have less at stake in terms of the future impacts of climate change and cost to sustain Glendale's energy grid, which means they may choose to vote in a more traditional way rather than looking beyond to the future. This means, as the only individual at the age of 20, I am forced to represent pretty much all millennials, all Gen Z, and of course, Gen Alpha, that is thousands of people in Glendale, if not 80 to 100,000 people in Glendale. I think if there were more young people, even moderately aged individuals, the STAG would not only represent Glendale much better, but also would have pushed for far more faster and more sustainable scenarios. As for scenarios, where she for the stars and for the moon, please pick StAG 1, Scenario 4. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kurt Sawitzkows. Kurt, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council. I am a member of the STAG, but I want to clarify that my remarks reflect my own perspectives and not necessarily those of the full group. I think that most residents of Glendale are not engaged with government. They are severely underrepresented here tonight and as on the STAG. They may be aware of global warming but are unaware of the high cost they could be forced to pay under scenarios with aggressive decarbonization of the electric supply. Council's 2035 goals are laudable, except in the Glendale power sector. Because Glendale is unfortunate enough to be transmission constrained, it's imperative that we generate power within our own borders. Due to the further limitations of green generation opportunities within Glendale, thermal generation must remain an option of last resort to meet reliability and affordability. Immature technology and infrastructure cause uncertainty and high expense in most of the scenarios tested in a sense modeling. It is my hope that green energy solutions will continue to develop, but forcing an early adoption ahead of the technology market will be too risky to rely upon currently. Scenario 1, the California policy as proposed in this IRP is our best option for reliable, cost-effective, and goal-focused energy. In regard to carbon reduction, when we drop coal in two years, our carbon portfolio will already drop to half of the current status. Admittedly, not absolutely zero, but a huge step toward our goal. Following California policy is the best solution to keep utility rates low, which will allow residents more flexibility in their personal budgets. Residents might then buy electric vehicles, which will reduce carbon emissions from the transportation sector, which is an even bigger impact on carbon reduction than the energy sector. GWP is not constrained by the IRP and will continue to strive for carbon reduction. We're practical and economical. We need a reliable plan to reach our goals, not one based on hopeful wishes. I urge you to support and approve the thoughtful and considerate work of your staff and consultants on this IRP as presented. I certainly understand everyone's wishes to decarbonize. We need this IRP as a way to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Teresa Cheng. Teresa, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Teresa Cheng, and I'm also calling on behalf of this year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like the many other callers, I'm also calling to support the adoption of Scenario 4, which is consistent with the city's policies to achieve 100% clean energy by 2035 and the 10% rooftop solar and storage adoption goal. Through this IRP, Glendale has the opportunity to send a market signal now so that developers know the city is serious about planning for a clean energy transition and so that it can also collaborate with other utilities to potentially procure more non-combustion clean energy resources and transmission rates. On the issue of cost, the costs presented in the IRP do not reflect the bill savings that Glendale residents will receive from adopting distributed solar and storage and the downward pressure on rates from increased electrification. The costs for clean, firm dispatchable resources will likely continue to decrease with federal funding and technological advancement, while we know that gas prices will undeniably continue to rise. And this doesn't even include the upstream climate and health impact and costs from burning gas that the other caller had already mentioned, the other speaker had mentioned. Lastly, as GWP even presented on, Sacramento's IRP sets a zero-carbon goal by 2030, and Los Angeles's IRP sets a 100% clean energy goal by 2035. GWP was supposed to do this, too, and allowing them to simply ignore council guidance sets a very dangerous precedent, especially for consequential decisions such as this one. Developing an IRP that incorporates the city's goals is critical so that the city can plan now to procure the necessary clean energy resources to boost local resilience, especially local resources like rooftop solar and batteries, community solar and demand-side solutions, and evaluate its progress based on this plan. We simply cannot afford to kick the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Gustavo Moreno. Gustavo, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Dear honorable council members, public officials, and esteemed members of the public, my name is Gustavo Moreno. I am a member of the STAG, but want to clarify that my remarks are my own perspective and do not necessarily reflect those of the group. The STAG was cognizant of the energy costs. As energy costs rise, its impact ourselves throughout society. Businesses experience increased costs, which must often be passed on to consumers. While the over 26,000 people in Glendale experiencing poverty are forced to decide between the various necessities of life, simply to keep the lights on or to skip a meal. After over multiple months of meetings, robust dialogue, and taking full account of the possibilities and realities, the collective wisdom and intelligence of the STAG coalesced around the preferred choice. After multiple votes, and the data confirmed and cemented California policy as the clear winner, the final vote narrowed the points between the top two choices only because more interest went to the California policy that also used REX, showcasing that cost was a significant factor. What I found satisfying is that GWP stayed out of the STAG process and only provided input to provide context. I'm grateful that GWP allowed a third STAG option in the final attempt to satisfy the city council's 2035 goal in a cost-effective manner. The STAG worked hard to accomplish the 2035 goal as best as it could. However, costs increased substantially even for marginal gain. A good reason post-35 timelines received 30% more interest. I think the most ardent environmental supporters can agree that reaching over 90% of the goal scores high marks on any report card. The California policy is highly progressive and even more aggressive than the state official mandates. It achieved the majority of support since it enhances energy security and resilience, offers a cost-effective solution compared to other scenarios, aligned with state renewable portfolio standards and emission mandates, offers long-term viability, and is adaptable to future innovations and changing energy technologies. California policy is best path, GWP's best path forward. It is a positive outcome for all of Glendale and puts us on a sound and firm path forward toward a cleaner energy future. I would like to thank all the STAG members who worked in a collaborative, respectful, and co-creative process. I am honored to serve alongside all of them to present our united jewel city. And finally, for the reasons stated, I hope that this honorable body arrives at the same conclusion as the STAG, the GWP Commission, and can endorse the progressive California policy as well. Thank you. I respectfully yield the balance of my time.
Thank you. That is all.
Excuse me. That was our last speaker.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So let's get questions from the dials.
I have a couple of questions if I may.
Okay, Councilor.
Okay, thank you. If, this is for Mr. Mellon, Mr. Galanian. If we state in this IRP that we are, we want 100% clean air emissions by 2035, are we guaranteeing that? Is that a mandate? We must do that?
I would say it this way. If we're going to say to the world that this is our goal and our intent, when we put in the IRP, what we are doing is telling the state that this is what we are counting on. It's our, that's what we're focused on, this is what, this is how we're managing our resources where we're going. So it becomes, it becomes a significant statement for us to say that we are going to meet the 2035 goal, because it means that we have planned resources that we're going to be able to implement to meet it.
And if we don't, if we can't, are there consequences to be paid?
Yes, eventually. I mean, it wouldn't happen immediately, but there will be consequences if we can't meet it. We have, as we've been speaking all along in these conversations, there are many resources that are identified in those scenarios for 2035 that don't exist or are not publicly available. They're in development, they're proof of concept, everyone's very interested in them, but they're just not, they haven't come to fruition. There's, it's not a common practice, I'll say it that way, for a utility or anyone who's planning the future of anything that they're trying to achieve, to select things that don't exist as a resource to get there. And that's the problem we have with the 2035 scenarios that we run, especially the StAG 1 or Scenario 4, is the resource types that are used in there were put in there because they were specifically requested by STAG to be put in there. And we obliged, it makes perfect sense. We understood the characteristics of the resources that would be used in those scenarios. And because it's a model, we can build the characteristics in. It doesn't mean the resource exists, and that's our problem.
Okay. And can you explain Pasadena, last night, their decision to go 100% by 2030?
Yes. Very aggressive. They actually reference fuel cells as one of their primary sources as a resource. It's, and I don't know what's going to be fueling those fuel cells. They also have quite a few criteria associated with that, including doing studies for various things, DER penetration, solar penetration, all things that we are already doing, we're ahead of, and we're planning to do, right? So it's a very aggressive move on their part. I'm concerned about whether or not they can actually get there, especially based on the type of resources they're calling out.
And, go ahead.
Sorry, one other key thing is Pasadena is in the CISO. We are not. They have access to transmission and the ability to deliver energy from alternate sources. They do still, I believe, have a bottleneck in transmission going into their facility, but the way CISO counts for some of the energy delivery is it does not have to be delivered to load nor to be counted for from a renewable standpoint. It only has to be delivered into the CISO.
And as far as the hydrogen, do we know that we can transition into hydrogen by 2035? And as I understand, it would cost us $1 billion for the infrastructure, and where do those costs go?
So do we know that we can transition? No. We have, IPP is a good example of how one might manage to transition. The one benefit of IPP, where it's being built in Delta, Utah, is it has a, it has a supply of water, it has access to renewable resources, the wind in the Midwest and other resources up there. It has salt mines that we can convert to storage for the hydrogen. And again, hydrogen use in this scenario is primarily a storage element, right? Your conversion factor is like three to one. You have to generate three megawatts of renewable energy to get one megawatt of hydrogen stored and burned megawatt out. So it's not highly efficient, but it's not about efficiency, it's about storage. It's about moving the potential of energy into another area. Now, the type of hydrogen implementation that we would use in the basin here, you can liken it a little bit to storage, but it has to come from someplace else. How we would realize it, it would have to be hydrogen fuel supplied to our facilities, likely mixed at our location with natural gas initially, and eventually transitioning to 100% burn once the generators are all capable of doing so. So even with LA, and the distinction between LA and us is LA has a significant amount of in base in generation. We do not. We have a very limited supply of generation. Go.
I think Mr. Young wants to say something.
Yes. I'm sorry. On the matter of IPP, IPP has been designed for over 10 years. It's the perfect storm. Like Scott said, it has water, land, renewables, salt mines, and a generating source right there. And they're not even anticipating going to 100% hydrogen until 2045. And they're a good 10 or 15 years ahead of any potential hydrogen source here. On Friday, I went to the gas company to talk about Angeles Link, and they're very far away from being able to do it. The design of being able to create a whole different piping structure in order for us to be able to enjoy hydrogen is many, many years away, much further than the five years that we're focusing on, on this IRP.
That was going to be my next question about that link, the LA link. Okay, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Sorry. Maybe we're noting also that the only reason why we're having this conversation about hydrogen is because we must have dispatchable firm generation. We don't have that. And that's why we keep talking about it, because we need to have the ability to manage the variable resources that renewables represent. Wind blows when it blows, the sun is out when it's out, as long as a cloud doesn't come over. We need firm, manageable generation so we can account for the variability.
One more thing. I think, who mentioned it? Oh, Jackie, that we are 20, we're going to be 20% short in this plan by 20, in 2045? That we will not be close to 100% by 2045? She mentioned that in her, she said we would be 20% short.
I think I understand what Jackie was saying, but I don't want to put words in her mouth. I think what she's saying is, in our plan, natural gas burning will result in carbon, and in 2045, we will still have that carbon, but we're still looking at hydrogen. So as soon as hydrogen does become a viable option, we will be transitioning to hydrogen. So in StAG, in StAG 1 or Option 4, they're anticipating that hydrogen's going to be there in 2035. We're saying that we don't anticipate it happening in 2035. However, if it were to happen, we would be migrating towards full hydrogen, and if that were the case, we would have, we would be burning hydrogen, not have to worry about the carbon from the natural gas burning.
And I guess my last question is, if we adopt Scenario 1, will you be stopping our solar projects, our demand-response projects, all of those programs that we've initiated already? Are you going to stop doing that and just rely or?
Set on our laurels?
Yes. Well, focus on Grayson or Scholl or. Well, focus on Grayson or Scholl or forget about.
No, absolutely not. No, we, we still have a need. We anticipate load growth. We still need, we still need energy. The type of energies that are available to us most right now are in the renewables arena. So there's nothing that's going to prevent us or slow us down or stop us from attempting to achieve, one, the council's directive of the 2035. There's nothing stopping or slowing us down or preventing us from going out and looking for opportunity. We recognize that our worst-case scenario actually involves with the lack of generation in our system. And we know that because we only have three Wartzillas coming in. We only have a single combustion turbine unit in our backyard, and we have only 11 megawatts of baseload from Shaw Canyon when that's available. So we need generation.
We need to keep working. Okay.
Absolutely.
I want to follow up. I'll go to the others, but I just want to follow up on this question about consequences. You said there are consequences to not meeting the IRP. What are these consequences?
Consequences to not.
Not meeting our, what we put in the IRP.
Eventually, yes.
No, I mean, are there consequences? Are there penalties from the CEC?
So, thank you for that question, actually. So the CEC manages the POUs, the CPUC manages the IOUs. Right now, because of how the IOUs behave.
Scott, can you spell out those acronyms?
Sure. Sorry. Second language, sorry. The CPUC, California Public Utility Commission, manages the investor-owned utilities, the IOUs. Under that premise, all the regulatory requirements they edict to them also have penalties associated to them. Because the CEC is in charge of us, they've, California Energy Commission is in charge of publicly owned utilities, they've taken a lot of those regulations and applied them to us without the penalties because there'd been no need to penalize us because we perform. We comply with those requirements. The question is, who's going to be the first one not to comply with those requirements? We don't want to be the first ones to not comply.
If, if I may?
Well, I want to respond to that because, first of all, we had the virtual power plant in our last IRP.
Yeah.
It fell apart. Did we get penalized for that?
What was the impact?
The virtual power plant. We lost, we lost local solar. No, the answer is we didn't.
Scott wasn't there, so if, if I may, the reason why we didn't was because we had available resources to cover that shortfall. So if, if I may, with the IRP, what they do is they look at the standardized tables and they take all the utilities in California, they look at all the loading California, they look at all the resources to determine whether we have enough resources to meet the expected load. So when we talk about non-compliance and we put very aggressive goals in behind-the-meter solar or any of the other things that are different between STAG one and GWP one, if that resulted in us not having enough resources to meet our load, they would investigate us and they would want to know why we were very aggressive and not be able to meet the load.
Okay. But I mean, we have Los Angeles Department of Water and Power making assumptions about hydrogen in their 2035 plan. They're counting on hydrogen in their IRP.
That's a good point.
SMUD, I don't know how SMUD is getting to 2030. Burbank Water and Power just passed a 2040 where they're counting some resources that don't exist yet, like, like a small nuclear reactor.
Right.
So how are they able to do that and we're not?
So that, that is also a good question. In Los Angeles, their LA 100 has indicated that they're going to convert 2,600 megawatts of thermal generation to hydrogen. In the event that hydrogen doesn't materialize, they can still use natural gas to generate the 2,600 megawatts so that they're, they won't go into blackouts.
As can we. I mean, we still have our, we're not, are we retiring some natural gas?
We, we took down 234 megawatts and replaced it with 56 megawatts of Wartzilla engines. So there's a big difference between.
Okay. All right. All right. I'll leave it there. Let's, questions?
When I looked at the chart, it looks like in this initial phase, the cost's the The next report would be due 2027, 2028, right? Say we went with 2035 today, and come 2027, when we're doing the IRP again, we're realizing the hydrogen's not there, we don't know what's going on, are we able to submit a plan that's different than 2035?
In five years.
As we get closer?
In five years, yes.
Without penalties?
Yes. Essentially, yes, because the impact hasn't hit us.
So.
Structurally, we have an issue. I mean.
As long as we have enough resources to meet our load and our, our reserve criteria, then we would not be penalized because we are performing an action to prevent ourselves from being deficient.
Right.
But once we become deficient, then we would have to, we would have to notify the CEC and NERC to make sure that they're aware that our planning was not adequate and that we are deficient reserves.
So is there an opportunity for us to pass the 2035 and then have an annual work plan that comes from staff to us that dictates what's happening with this plan that we've submitted and have an opportunity to resubmit at any time? Do we have an opportunity to resubmit at any time?
We can if there's something substantial, if there's a substantial change in your portfolio, you, you're required to change your IRP.
Right.
So in the event that, and I'm just looking at numbers, so forgive me, if we indicate that behind-the-meter solar is going to be 98 megawatts.
By 2035?
By 2035, we would have to extrapolate that over the course between now and 2035. If we don't meet that criteria and that somehow necessitates us being delinquent with reserves, then we would have to go ahead and resubmit a new IRP.
So if today we agree that we're going to move forward 2035, and we move forward with that plan, and every year you're giving us updates on how you're working towards that plan, come 2027, and we're a little short of that plan, or wherever we may land, we have an opportunity to resubmit a new plan, correct?
You do have the capability of resubmitting. As long as you're not in violation of your capacity.
Is that what Los Angeles is doing? Or they have a, is their annual document internal or is it something that they keep submitting to?
They have two documents.
Okay. Can you walk us through that?
Yeah. So they initially did the IRP in 2018, 2019, just like everyone else. They eventually developed a SLTRP. It's a long-term resource planning document. And it has a little bit more flexibility for them to define things that are more in-house goals than naturally, or than, than would be specific to what their state-required goals would be. So they create a second document, essentially. There's a fair amount of discussion in that SLTRP about the influence of hydrogen and how they would go about meeting those needs. Again, everything with LA has two things associated with it. One, they have generation. They have a large amount of generation. And two, they can, if hydrogen doesn't manifest, that generation is still existent, still can supply energy to their load, it just does it through natural gas. So they, they aren't, how do I say this? They aren't low on resources, right? Not like us. We have diminished capability to supply energy. They don't.
Okay.
Sure. And, hold on.
Maybe I can just add a little flavor there. I led the process of modeling for their SLTRP, Strategic Long-Term Resource Plan. I can say LA is very resource-rich. They're spending a lot of money on engineering studies right now because they had to start immediately with their push towards hydrogen. It hinges on the Angeles Link being developed from SoCal gas. If that link isn't developed, then they don't have hydrogen, they go back to Plan B. They don't have a Plan B right now, but they develop a Plan B. It, it seems prudent that the largest utility, municipal utility in the world, which is LADWP, has the resources to do the R and D for hydrogen over the next decade. And really, Glendale can leverage that work and benefit from LADWP's work. To me, that seems like the prudent course of action.
And then I think part of the presentation, one of the comments, I think also one of the speakers made was, the future costs are largely fictional. Can we speak to how you came? I recognize that there were two budgets presented, one was, you know, at the GWP, and then it was corrected. Where are we getting these numbers from? Like when we, when we say it's fictional?
Sure. We know, here's what we know today, is that IPP is 840 megawatts and it costs $5 billion. We extrapolated from that to get the cost per megawatt of hydrogen capacity. That is for hydrogen, that is for a plant that burns 30% hydrogen and 70% natural gas. From that, we added 20%, just, we thought, because we want to build a plant that burns 100% hydrogen, not that burns 30% hydrogen. There are engineering retrofits needed to be able to burn 100% hydrogen. It burns hotter, the fuel flows are different. So there are, it's not, you can't just put hydrogen in a regular plant. Additionally, so we, we use that number to cover the structural changes that would be needed. That seemed like a reasonable number to me. You're right, there is no hard and fast number that we can go and say that is the cost because the Angeles Link, the pipeline to transport hydrogen to Los Angeles, I have not seen a good cost estimate for that, that we could incorporate. So, so we said IPP, scale that down to Glendale size, add 20%. That seems like it's at least in the ballpark.
Okay. Just doing questions now, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
Most of my questions were asked.
Okay. Um, let me see if, so, okay. Hold on, let me just see if I have any other questions. I guess, I guess I have a kind of a high-level question as to, you know, what's the point of an IRP and how does it affect what we're going to do? So we submit an IRP on December 31st. We come in, you come into work after the holidays. How does it change what we do?
So the intent of the IRP, even though it's a 20-year plan, is really a five-year window of where we're headed. That five-year plan gives us a perspective of how we can meet our internal resources and then our information is combined with others who are doing the same thing in California and brought to Cali, brought up to the state of California. And they look to see that there's sufficient resources and energy to meet load in California.
Okay. But how does it affect us as far as what we do on a day-to-day basis?
I think qualified "we." Are you talking?
GWP.
Okay. Us on a daily basis, we, it sets us in motion to make sure we're headed in the right direction. So it is the, from your standpoint, that is the qualifier. We have that addition of attempting to get to and looking at the 2030, 2035 goals that you have set up, and we are aiming for that. From a state perspective, because this is, be a state-level obligation, we have the 2045 requirements because those are the, all of the California policies that are set there. Now, by us telling the state we're going to perform better than what they are requiring, there's, from their perspective, probably, great. And we're going to hold you to that. Or we can send them, this is what we plan on doing because this is what you are saying we have to do, and we say, great. That doesn't prevent us from doing everything council's asking us to do to get to the 2035 marker.
But in the, in the, in this five-year window, okay? Because I know it's like there's a 20-year look out to, or 21 or whatever it is, 2045. Then there's a five-year window. In this five-year window, when I look at it, you know, tell me what you think about this. I mean, when I look at the difference between scenario one and scenario four, the main difference is that scenario four, we're going to be running harder on DERs. We're going to be pushing harder on behind-the-meter solar, energy efficiency, demand response, customer-sided batteries, all that kind of stuff versus, versus scenario one. It's not like there's anything we're not going to be doing. It's not like we're going to be taking down some natural gas resources. It's not like we're going to be doing anything that's going to make it harder for us to achieve our goals. It just potentially makes it easier for us because we're going full steam ahead on local resources. So how does it hurt us?
Yeah.
How does it, how does it set us back if we were to, if we were to submit scenario four and then five years from now, we say, hey, we thought we could retire Grayson nine in 2035. We thought we could get out of Magnolia in 2035. You know what? Doesn't look like we can because this hydrogen thing isn't panning out. And then we, and then we change it. We're probably in a better position then because we've done more on local resources. So what, what's wrong with that analysis?
My concern is the commitment to something that we have no proof we can get to. We've got plenty of proof showing in the last 10 years even that all of our work on energy efficiency, going for solar installations on houses, on, just in the public sector in general, in everything in Glendale, all the work we're doing in Glendale, it's not progressing at the pace that we really want it to and we're trying to make happen. So what would this be doing? Well, we'd be committing to something that we have no information is going to tell us we can get there. If we look at past performance on how we engage and get people to act, they're not acting. I mean, we talked about the demand response program. We've spent $3.2 million so far on that program. We've gotten a total of 2.6 megawatts response and in high availability times, we really need to cut that load, we only get a 1.6 megawatt response.
I know, but if you ask me, I would say it's because it's not a very exciting program.
Well, I mean, then we have the conversation about how much money do we have to give somebody to do the right thing?
But it's not like if we're doing scenario three, there's something we're not doing. It's not like we're not investing in more natural gas or we're not investing in something, right?
No, I mean, when you talk about the natural gas, I mean, four removes natural gas.
What's that?
The STAG.
In 2035.
By 2035.
By 2035. But we don't start reducing it before then. We're not, in the next five years, we're not taking off any of our natural gas, we're not retiring any of our natural gas assets, right?
None of the ones that are remaining. We've already retired some.
Right. But we're not retiring anything new. So if things don't work out, we still have those assets. All right. Anyway, that was, I just kind of wanted you to respond to that analysis. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm done. Should we go to deliberations then?
Just one question really.
So I, there's, I don't expect you to have all the answers about Los Angeles, but since LADWP in LA has been brought up a few times, do we know what LA's generation capability Based on what their demand is and?
They're about 6,000 megawatts of load.
Okay. And what is it that they usually, what's the closest they've come? Do they come close to using all of that?
Oh, yes. They have, I mean, I don't know off the top, but as Mark said, in, in the city of LA, they have 2,600 megawatts. Actually, they have close to 3,000 megawatts of natural gas resources in the city, so half of it right there. And they have no problems with transmission. They have more transmission than they need, at least now. And, and so they're resource-rich right now.
Based on what? How does that mean, like, they're resource-rich if they've come close to reaching their peak of what they can produce and what is demanded?
Well, so they have Castaic Pumped Hydro is one big resource that can store seven or eight hundred megawatt hours of energy. That's like an enormous battery in their backyard. They have quite a, quite a lot of solar and wind. I mean, they're, they're fairly clean utilities.
Sorry. So the Castaic is it's a hydro-producing?
It's a pumped, pumped hydro, pumped storage.
So while they have water or during times when there's enough water, they're, they're able to produce it. So while they have water or during times when there's enough water, they're, they're able to produce it?
That's right.
But during severe droughts, that's?
It's not hydro, they pump it up.
They pump it up?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's a reservoir, it's two reservoirs where they pump the water back and forth. Yeah, I don't, they, they have more resources, they're not lacking resources currently.
Have they never had blackouts?
I don't think so.
Okay.
They were fine in August of 2021 when there were rolling blackouts in California.
But they're supposed to provide, if they are, have that generation, aren't they supposed to provide to the rest of the state?
To the rest of the state? I don't know that they have an obligation to the rest of the state. They do have an obligation in general to the balancing authority, those within it, right? And so assuming they can provide it, they've got to get the energy to us. We have the limited transmission with them. And in fact, during winter, this last, I think it was this last winter, they lost two lines and we were very close to having blackouts. And that was in the winter.
Okay.
Okay. So anyone want to start?
So thank you for the presentation. STAG members, thank you for your work. People who came and sat, sat or stood, thank you for, for coming here. You know what? I think it was a meeting I had last week with Jackie Agish and Jack that got me really thinking about this. They, they seem to concede that if we can't go 100% renewable by 2035, that it's no big deal, that we just, just do another, an I R P and that there's no penalty for that. And we've been talking about it a little bit up here. Well, I wanted to find out about that and I was going to ask staff to do some research. But I said, well, let me do it myself. So I started doing some research. And I started with the California Public Utilities Code, 9621. It says every five years, you need to do an I R P. And the I R P that you give must meet the procurement portfolio of both short-term and long-term electric-related and demand response products must meet. This is the law for the I R Ps. I just heard from Mr. Mellon that there's no way that we can meet 100% by 2035. Did I hear you correctly? There's no technology that we have, that we know of, short of the Martians coming down, that are, that are going to make that happen.
No, unfortunately, no, we do not have that type of technology to meet that goal.
You're?
Today.
As when we submit this, right? I mean, in five years, you know, God knows what can happen. But, but today as we do it. You're an electrical engineer.
Yes.
Mark, I don't know about you, you're a finance guy. But I know electrical engineers have, have ethics, codes of ethics.
Very much so.
Would you sign your name to an I R P that says we will meet 2035 100% renewable?
No, I would not.
Because it wouldn't be true, would it?
No.
It would be aspirational.
Absolutely.
It would be something like L A 100 is, which is an aspirational goal, which says this is really where we want to go. But it's not an accurate representation to the state, is it? Now, what does the state do with that? They just don't file those I R Ps and say, you know, in a big folder. They, they use that to develop the state's power demand and supply issues, correct?
Correct.
So it's an important document. If Glendale says we're going to have X number of megawatts by 2035, in this case, we're saying we're going to get a lot more solar and D E R and all that. And we don't have it, that causes a problem, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
In fact, isn't that the main reason that we had the, the electrical problems in 2020? This is a CISO report and they were examining, I think we went to near blackout in the state. It says one of the main reasons was poor planning. Cities and regions overstated the amount of power that they had available. It's right here, CISO, final root cause analysis, mid-August 2020 extreme heat wave, California I S O. And, and if we were to send a document to the C E C, which is a government agency, and let's say your name isn't on it, but maybe the mayor's name is on it or council's name is on it, saying that we're going to have all this energy in five-year chunks, and it's not a true document, it's a false document then. And Mr. City Attorney, aren't there penalties for submitting false documents to the state? Let me refer you to Penal Code 115, where it is a crime to submit a false document to a state agency. And let me also refer you to Government Code 14842.5, where it shall be unlawful to knowingly make any statement or produce a document that is fraudulent or false as to any material matter. So if we're going to submit an I R P that doesn't have the resources that says we have, that's false. And we're giving it to the state and they're relying on their power plan for that, which could cause blackouts, I, I don't know where this council is going. We want to go 100% by 2035? I do too. I voted for it in 2022. I voted for it. That's a lot different than telling the state and the California Energy Commission that we're going to have this power in five-year bites. And by 2035, we're going to have all this demand, this D E R and solar. And we've tried that solar stuff and we're having a heck of a time to get it in. So like L A 100 is, that's how I see my vote was. Yeah, I want to get 100% renewable by 2035. But I sure as heck am not going to vote for something that has no resources that back it up. That's a false statement, that's a false document that we're going to be giving. I don't know how, you know, you can explain it away, but we're not going to get punished and all that. Well, I don't know about the punishment, but I do know what the law says. So whether we get punished or not, it's still improper for this council to do so. We're much different than Pasadena, we're much different than Sacramento, we're much different than Burbank. When my staff tells me we can't do it, it's not obtainable, it's unobtainium, I'm sorry, I can't vote for that. And that's perhaps what the STAG saw, where they voted, the majority of them voted, weighted and unweighted to support the G W P plan. I mean, let's push for, I mean, we're, we're going, you know, all out for renewable. That's great, let that be our plan. But let's not represent to anyone at the state that we've got it. This is how we're going to do it when it's not there. That's false, that's fraudulent. I can't vote for that.
I'll go down, it's okay. Well, I want to thank staff and I want to thank the members of STAG, all of you who are here tonight weighing in. To me, it's hard to follow an attorney, you know that. So I'm not speaking as an attorney, I'm just speaking as a resident and a council member. To me, this is a reality check. This is a reality check. And if I remember correctly, I was the one that introduced the goal of 100% by 2035. I was the one that introduced that. But here we are tonight, faced with the reality of it and the implications of not being able to achieve it. And I was thinking to myself, how can I say this? And I thought, well, it's like squeezing blood out of a turnip. You know, we're trying so hard to get there. We're trying so hard, staff is trying. And we're trying to make decisions that can get us there, but it just seems like a hill that's so hard to climb. My goal has always been and always will be to achieve reliable, from the beginning we said this, reliable, sustainable and affordable energy for our community. That's an achievable goal, we can do that. But I want, I, I want to state in the I R P that we will or can achieve 100% by 2035. But here we have, we've invested thousands of dollars in, on a consultant firm. Our staff has worked very hard on this. We have a STAG committee that voted for the G W P one. And with all of this going on, everyone is saying we have, we can only reach 91% by 2035. It's that last 10% challenge that is the issue. And so we have to look towards a total decarbonation, which will require innovative technology and solutions, cutting-edge technology. Are we there yet? We're getting there, but we're not there today. And that's just what I think Councilmember Najarian was saying, that this is today. We're talking about today and the next five years, but we don't know where we're going. We don't know where we're going to land. So studies have found that preparing these possibilities, the technology and the solutions, allow us for time to free the gap, to let these things happen and would be the prudent thing. And we've heard that word a couple of times tonight. And I mean, look at, and that's why I ask about the prospect of hydrogen from, from L A. You know, how long is that going to take? Are we going to, are we going to have it by 2035? Are we going to be able to work with L A on, on that technology? You know, we've tried to work with them before and you know where we've gotten. So this, this tech.
Bert, Bert, please, Bert, Bert, please. Bert, Bert? Bert, you're going to have to leave if you can't, if you can't stay in your seat. Okay, please.
Good night.
Please.
This technological uncertainty. This technological uncertainty and cost of getting to true zero emissions is concerning to me. We just raised the electrical rates for our residents. Many of them are going to find it hard to meet those, those raises. Do I want to ensure more costs to our residents? No. G W P one is the most effective for ratepayers. So I have to take that into consideration. And also, I think, you know, I've talked to some people and they say, well, we want 100% renewables and 100% decarbonization, no matter what it costs. But we can't, I can't look at it that way. I have to think about all of our residents and what it's going to cost. And if we look at the results of our less-than-expected gains in demand response, it doesn't seem that our residents are, are really as, as excited or determined as council is or staff to get solar on their rooftops. I remember going to a, an environmental coalition meeting and you had a map and you said, you had all these homes and you said, we can get, I think you said 10%, you know, on our rooftops. Where are they? We don't have them. So I, I think we have to get more particip, we do have to get more participation from our, our residents. We have to work harder to do that. So if, if I vote to approve the, the I R P as presented, it doesn't mean that I will not continue to urge staff to get to 100% by 2035, to be aggressive. And I'm certain that they will strive to do that. Aggressively researching technology, continue robust programs to engage our residents in solar on their rooftops, demand response and any other programs that we can come up with in the future. You know, we can say it, but can we do it? And that's the issue. So it's, this is a tough reality. I know it's tough for the Environmental Coalition, it's tough for me. But I think it's the right thing to do tonight to approve the I R P as written with the G W P one scenario. Thank you.
Okay, who wants to go next?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, you want to go? Either way.
Doesn't matter. Sure. I like it. You know, I'll start off with Councilmember Najarian. I mean, based on your argument, same applies to the 2045 scenario. We don't know what hydrogen is going to look like. So if we are going with that argument, then that applies to, to the other as well. I think one of the largest issues that I have here is that the California one does not match our local ordinance and our policy. I had, I have it in front of me. The city of Glendale intends to achieve 100% clean, renewable or non-carbon emitting energy excluding renewable biofuels not already permitted or approved by no later than 2035. And then it goes on to say staff is directed to develop a plan designed to achieve the goal stated in section four. So we either have this or we don't. I can't work off of unicorns. And if we are not serious about this, then we need to be looking at it as a council. I've said this time and time again on other items that have come up. You know, we pass these ordinances and resolutions, we have them on paper. But I think how we work towards those goals is extremely critical. I think difficult times call for bold action. And I think that our Mother Earth is facing very difficult times and it requires us to take bold action. I would like for us to move forward with STAG one and scenario four. But I would also like for staff to bring annual reports to us on how we're getting there. You know, time and time again, I've asked this question of whether we can resubmit. I know that we can without having penalties. I don't like fear mongering. And so if we are committed to this, then we should be moving forward accordingly, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kosakian.
Sure, thanks. I was taking some notes, so some of these thoughts may be a little disjointed, but it's all leading to one place, so bear with me. In regards to how the blackouts of 2020 and the Cal I S O or the CISO findings as to people over-promising, under-delivering. Look, to this day, we're three years out and we're still lacking in new transmission. Transmission is our biggest regional problem. We all know that, right? And we, as Glendale, can't unilaterally go out and start building new transmission lines. That needs to be a state problem, a state solution. So for all those who want to point to this, there's a very important, urgent solution that we need to be advocating for. And that's telling our leaders in Sacramento, from the governor on down, to get their blank together and start building transmission lines. So whether it's talking about wind offshore or, you know, hydrogen, that is the promised land for all utilities or for anyone else, you know, solar out in the deserts of the West to build those transmission lines so we can bring them in and cut out the political BS that's preventing us from doing it. And, you know, I am concerned about a number of things, but our aspirational goals are not one of them. I'm concerned about the ferocity of wildfires and the fluctuations of climate change and how it's impacting different communities. In my lifetime now, I'm seeing American cities and towns, both large and small, in places where I never imagined being burnt to crisp and being completely incinerated because of our lack of action and planning for how to care for our planet. And as a parent, as someone who wants to pass something on to the next generation, I can't sit here and pursue the status quo. We can talk about 2045, we can talk about 2035. Really, if we are not setting an example and doing our best to set a tone, just as other cities have done, then I don't see us really holding true to the promises that we've made to ourselves. Now, I've, I like history. And I'm getting to an age where I've lived some, through some of that history. And some of you may remember in 2001 or roughly the 2000s, when California did have rolling blackouts. And at that time, Governor Gray Davis was not. And at that time, Governor Gray Davis was not only blamed for it, but he was actually brought to recall because of it. We were all led to believe that the blackouts were because of a lack of power generation. Much later, it came out that it was actually because of manipulation of the energy markets by companies for profit that were gouging ratepayers, municipalities, utilities, by creating these artificial supply gaps between, you know, generation and actual supply. We can at least try to get to our goals. It will be uncomfortable. It will be difficult. It could even be expensive right now at this moment. But I've sat in these chambers when, five years ago, 10 years ago, people would come in and say, we want solar on our homes and we're not able to do it. There's a bureaucratic maze that we have to navigate through. Or, you know, people who did not want to have solar panels on historic homes were complaining about the neighbors who were trying to put them on. Today, you see solar panels in a lot of places you wouldn't see them before. So this is obviously a divisive issue among some of us on the dais, but for me, it's very simple. I think that we need to be bold. We need to try our best. And if we have fallen short of what we want to do and what we should do, then we can come back and readjust our expectations. But I think 2035 should remain the goal. So I would support STAG 1.
Thank you. Okay, well, a lot of what I was going to say has been said. But I will say, I think that Scenario 1 is really just not at the level of ambition that we should be presenting to the public and to the world. It's a business-as-usual approach. It has zero behind-the-meter storage, so it assumes zero customer adoption of storage. It has only very modest growth in local solar over the next decade. I calculate 23%. It's assuming we add 7 megawatts onto a base of 31 megawatts, which is 23%. I know Jackie Gish had a different number, but I'm including not only behind-the-meter solar, but the city solar projects that we've already approved, which comes out to about 31 megawatts. So we're only adding 7 megawatts, or 23%, over the next decade. That is very unambitious. There's no virtual power plant in this. There's no vehicle to grid, even though all the automakers now are bringing out automobiles that can hook up to the grid and provide battery storage. There's demand response development at historic growth trends, energy efficiency at reasonable growth trends, but still modest. So I just think this is a plan that doesn't reflect our, what we're capable of as a city. I think we can do more. Yes, we haven't. We don't, we haven't gotten to all those households on the map of the virtual power plant because we never came out with a virtual power plant. There are a lot of things that we haven't done more in demand response because the Franklin program is pretty lackluster. There are a lot of things we can do. But if we set the goal of not doing them, we will definitely not do them. If we set the goal that we're going to do them, we have at least a fighting chance of getting there. So I think we need to be ambitious. We need to have a plan that respects the clear goals that council set out in the Clean Energy Resolution. And frankly, I'm shocked, really, that GWP would bring us a plan that doesn't do that, that makes so little progress on distributed energy resources and has such significant greenhouse gas emissions even past 2045. It really comes across to me as dismissive of what we've been saying that we want. When I voted for the Clean Energy Resolution, it wasn't just a feel-good aspirational thing to me. It was a statement that was very serious, and it was a statement that I expected GWP would take seriously and would understand that these are the marching orders that we need to execute on. And that's what I want. This IRP is a planning document. This sets out our goals. And utilities all around us are putting, are making assumptions about resources based on technologies that either don't exist or are not commercialized. LA has 2035. They're counting on hydrogen. Burbank just passed a 2040. They're counting on a number of things, such as I mentioned, a mod, whatever you call it, small nuclear reactor. SMUD has 2030. They're counting on a whole bunch of things that are somewhat speculative. We get that. And that's the nature of this kind of exercise. We're saying, this is what we intend to accomplish. But remember, we're not removing any resources or failing to invest in new resources that are critical to meeting our obligations to the grid. If we go ahead with Scenario 4, all it means is that we're going to be working harder earlier to ramp up demand response, to ramp energy efficiency, behind-the-meter solar, behind-the-meter batteries, all of these things, we're going to just do more of. There's nothing that we're going to do less of. We're not taking any of these natural gas assets offline. So if it turns out that in 2035, hydrogen isn't working out, LA is going to have to shift gears, and then we also shift gears. If transmission doesn't materialize, then I agree with Councilmember Kosakian, and this is probably even more critical than hydrogen, LA is going to have to shift gears, and we're going to have to shift gears. So, you know, we all understand that we're planning 20 years. A lot is going to change. And we're saying, these are things that are in our long-term plan, but we always have the opportunity, either before the next IRP in five years or at most in five years when we do a new IRP, to shift gears. And shifting gears then will not put us behind in any way relative to adopting a less aggressive plan today. So I think it's important that we send a message to the public, to our partners in the balancing area, to the regulators, to suppliers and technology partners that we will be working with in the future, that we are serious, that we're not just passing feel-good resolutions, that we intend to meet our obligations. And so I cannot vote to support the IRP as currently drafted. And I would only support something similar to Scenario 4. I don't know what the process is now for GWP to reboot and come back with a new IRP, but I think that's what you're going to have to do. So that's where I am. And I don't know how we go forward with motions and seconds. Maybe our-
May I ask a question? Not on the merits of our discussion, but just procedure. If I understand correctly, the IRP, whichever one we, whichever scenario we vote for, I can tell which way it's going to go, is submitted to the California Energy Commission, and they put it on their docket for a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to be notified when that is on a public hearing. They take public testimony too, don't they? Written testimony and public testimony?
Yes, sir.
And they evaluate the IRP themselves. They just don't say, "Thank you, Glendale." They go through it, perhaps look at some of the assumptions and the thing. So please keep council, please keep all of council aware of that. I may want to travel up there and see what they're going to do about it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to make a brief comment before you have any questions. And I don't know what the process is going to be moving forward either. I just have to state that I respectfully disagree with one comment you made regarding GWP dismissing council's direction for 100% clean energy. That has never been the attempt and will never be the attempt. As I indicated in my opening remarks, they will continue to strive to meet council's goal of 100% clean energy by 2035.
Okay. So, Mr. City Attorney, what are our options now? We are, the motion was to adopt the IRP. Obviously, we're not adopting the IRP as it is today. So what do we do?
Mr. Mayor, based on what I've heard and after talking with Mr. Young, I would think that a motion directing staff to revise the IRP, to make Scenario 4 the preferred scenario, and then to submit that to CEC would be a motion that could be adopted, and then staff would take direction from that and finish up and revise the IRP in accordance with your direction.
Okay. And I assume since it's not going to be, it's not going to happen by next week, we are going to have to go to the CEC and get an extension of some kind. That's correct. Okay.
That's the case, then I'll make a motion to revise the IRP to Scenario 4 to submit to the CEC.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Then we'll take roll call.
Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
And Mayor Brotman?
Yes. All right. What's next?
Mayor Brotman, Item 12 is Discussion of Councilmember's Future Agenda Requests.
Okay. Could you read the first item into the record, please?
Mayor Brotman's Request for a Report on a Coyote Management Plan.
Okay.
I'll second that discussion or that item for discussion.
Okay. Does anybody need to hear any-
What do we, what do you envision in that?
Well, a number of cities have plans that outline how they want to manage our relationship with our coyote population. It would be a combination of things we can do. Maybe there's some things that, you know, we do to reduce-
Don't say trapping.
No, no, no. It wouldn't. I mean, a plan could have a lot of things, but I don't think it would be trapping. I think it would be mostly around education so that people understand, you know, how you discourage, you know, how you make sure that coyotes aren't getting habituated, feeding coyotes, maybe lids on trash cans in our parks, things that we can do to reduce the-
Do you envision Pasadena Humane playing a role in that as well?
Pasadena Humane, yes, I do.
Because they're our enforcement arm, I guess.
Mayor Brotman, I think that report needs to highlight the increase that we are seeing everywhere and something that I keep hearing regardless of where people live. And so I don't know if there are other mitigation things that we can do, but I know that packs are going to people's backyards and they're on the streets. I know we stopped walking on our own. And it's not even at nighttime anymore. It's during the day as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's been a lot of public concern. We've all gotten the emails. We see it on Nextdoor. And it would really be a matter of hears how Glendale is addressing the coyote situation. I think practically, yeah, in order to mitigate it, it's going to be mostly educating the community. But maybe there's some things we can do as well.
Are you talking about mostly on our website, the technology that we're using, you know, that sort of thing? Or are you talking about a schedule of workshops for neighborhoods or homeowners associations or?
That's what the report might tell me.
I know Pasadena has announced a plan, and I think it involves a lot of community outreach, a lot of town halls, things like that.
Does that need a vote?
Yeah.
First and second.
Motion to-
Okay, we have a-
Call the roll, please.
Move by Councilmember Kosakian. Did we have a second?
A second.
You seconded it? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadurian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Thank you. And our next new business item?
Next item is Item B, Mayor Brotman's Request to Review the Board and Commission Nominating Panel Rotation Process.
Okay. And, you know, this is with regard to the Civil Service Commission, the fact that-
Same, the two panels were the same for two appointments. It was LMU and you, Councilmember Asadurian and Mayor Brotman, and Mayor Brotman, and then Councilmember Asadurian. I support a discussion on how to reform that.
Okay. Would that be, so we have to bring an item to council to make the change?
Right.
Because we want to make a one-off change here. I don't know if we want to actually revise our whole process or can we just do it as a-
You probably want to look at both because I could see this happening with other commissions because if you want to have, for example, if you want to have a process where the panel could waive or if you want to have a, look at having the process so that that rotation happens with each commission as opposed to overall, so that you're ensuring-
Why can't we have it where, I mean, obviously, this was devised as a way, it came up because it was done in some sort of methodology. Well, when you see that the two same names come up, just move on to the next pair in order.
We'll bring that back as an option as well.
But can we do it in two steps? Because we don't want these two seats to be vacant for a long time. If it's going to take a while to come up with a new-
We'll bring you back a resolution to deal with Civil Service. And then as part of that, that report will bring you some options as far as how to revise the policy. And then you can provide some generic direction on that, and then we'd bring back a follow-up report on that one as well, so.
Okay. All I was going to say is, if it's going to take longer to develop those options, maybe we can bifurcate it and just take care of this immediate problem first?
Yeah, that's a good point. When we bring this back in January, we'll give you some options on how to do that based on how much bandwidth we have to prepare options for you.
Okay. So we have a motion to support that in a second? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers Asadurian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And then for oral communications?
Yes. Would you like me to read?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Why don't you, sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
Next item is Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items. Not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
And I have one card here. Is that all we have?
We have a caller. We also have a number of folks who are filling cards out at the moment.
Please get your cards in because we want to go through these here first. So once this one is complete, if we don't have the other cards, we're just going to close it and go to, and go to the phone calls. So we'll start with Levon Arroyan. Levon Arroyan? Is he here?
Levon Arroyan?
No? Okay. Are there other people filling out cards or no?
No.
Are you Levon Arroyan? No? No? Okay, let's go to the phones in that case.
Frank Gallo is on air. Frank, you have five minutes.
Hi. Good evening, council members. My name is Frank Gallo. When the pandemic started, the US government, the state, and the local governments took measures to keep people healthy and housed. Large amounts of money were disbursed to both companies and individuals with very lax qualification requirements. Local governments, like Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, approved ordinances that prohibited evictions regardless of the people's ability to pay their rents or their mortgages. Furthermore, those laws were coupled with a state law that went into effect on January 2020, named AB 1482, designed to limit rent increases. All the legislation had good intentions, but unfortunately, it had unintended consequences. Since dollars were readily available to both companies and individuals, the price of the abundant dollar went down. It lost value. The unintended consequence of the free money was inflation. Two years within the pandemic, the state ran out of money and stopped paying people rent, but delinquent renters in Los Angeles County could not be evicted. An unintended consequence was that several landlords were unable to sell their property at market value and were unable to pay their mortgages. Furthermore, when the eviction moratorium ended, eviction filings in LA County surged. The unintended consequence of the eviction moratorium was a huge wave of rent delinquencies with consequent eviction filings. But there was another unintended consequence. The eviction moratorium resulted in a dramatic reduction of rentable properties, which meant that housing demand greatly surpassed housing supply. That simply translated into higher rents. Finally, that was coupled with the guaranteed rent increases that came with AB 1482. Since most landlords felt that by not increasing rents on a yearly basis, they would lose the opportunity to do so and fall behind the inflation. When it comes to manipulating a market, it makes sense to have as little intervention as possible and allow the market to correct itself. A law or an ordinance might be approved with a group's benefit in mind, but that law or ordinance might have unintended consequences that will have the opposite effect of what that government body might want to accomplish. Please allow the market to correct itself and stay away from restricting rental housing any further. We don't need more unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other one?
No.
So we have, we have one speaker here, Leana.
I still just can't remember the name.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll be translating from Armenian today.
We have come to understand that this forum is not a discussion forum to ask questions and receive responses.
We do understand this is a very short, we do have a very short time, and as you may already know, we are part of the Lomita residents, and we are here to basically present the same concerns.
As you may know, we've been given time until January 16, and right now it's the New Year's. People are elated, joyful.
We are all worried to what is going to happen. We've seen the various discussions in regards for the eviction moratorium, and we haven't seen any response, and we don't know to us what is going to happen to us during the season.
And we have one question, and that question is, could you please ask the housing department
or any representative to contact us and tell us, when will we get any updates in regards for this ordinance and what options we will have?
It has come to our attention that you're the medium between tenants and landlords, and you might have had conversations with them, but we are unaware of any decisions
or any of the conversations that went along, and we have to come to the city council to get any information or to express our concerns.
vouchers that we have received to help us with... Not yet, but we have applications.
And not everyone might be able to access this benefit, and even if we receive Section 8 and we're placed into another living quarter, a new landlord might come and tell us that they were going to renovate and ask us to evict as well, and we'll be in the same situation all over again. It is important that this ordinance is of the highest importance and it's acted upon as soon as possible.
And you have mentioned that some of the issues are beyond your powers, and the city of Glendale is unable to do something about it.
However, since other cities and other municipalities are able to act on this and are able to provide resolution, you should be able to give us a resolution as well. The first one is, what's the final, what's going to be the final solution to the problem? How much, how much longer is it going to be after New Year's that we're going to receive a response? And second is, are we going to be informed of the conversation between the landlords and the council and what will be provided to us, whether that's the money amount or any other benefits?
It's not a good...
Thank you.
Okay. And before you, before you go away, let me just ask, I know there's the specific, some of the specific issues, and then there's the general issue about the rental rights ordinance. So when do we anticipate the rental rights ordinance to come back to us?
Mayor Brotman, member of city council, it is planned to come in front of you on January 30th.
So January 30th, potentially, then if we introduce it, then it would be early February?
Correct. February 6th will be adoption.
Okay. So that's our current plan, end of January, beginning of February is when it would get adopted, and then it would go into effect...
Thirty days after.
Thirty days after that?
Too late.
Right?
Unless it's adopted on an urgency basis, which if council wants us to look at that as part of the, we can, as part of the request, we can look at that.
Okay. But that would be, that would govern, you know, the relocation assistance, the rules around how much work has to be done before it qualifies as...
Substantial.
As a substantial renovation and a number of other, yeah, the definition of the qualified tenants and some of those things, right?
Mayor Brotman, that's addressing the larger, larger rental, if I may just...
Yeah, yeah, because I wanted to get...
Mayor Brotman, if I may, the tenant had mentioned that they are going to be evicted by January 16. What should they do? Should they look for other places to live, or what are the, what actions should they take?
Are they in touch with our housing folks? I mean, I don't know why they should need to come here to ask...
If I may, it's probably best, again, to try to put them in touch with our folks. I know also that a number of the tenants have been working with neighborhood legal services. So it's probably best that that communication occurred through that.
They were all coming as a group, so I'm trying to understand, how is it that some are in communication with our housing staff, and there's a whole other group that is not aware and is asking for housing staff to be...
Mayor Brotman, members of city council, that's the reason why we asked for a representative from the group, so they all get the same message from staff. Now, whoever contacts staff, they get a response. Whoever doesn't, unfortunately, will be left without a response. However, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, a large group of them are being represented by neighborhood legal services. A large group of them, a number of them, as was noted, have submitted their application for emergency housing voucher, so they're in the process. I know of at least one tenant who has already moved out and found an alternative residence. So there are a lot of moving parts to this.
Is there, is there a way that we can just take down whoever's here today that's requesting that housing staff connect with them, that we just take their information and we reach out to them?
Yeah, go ahead. I believe they already have spoken with almost every single one of them.
Mayor Brotman, members of council, maybe I can help shed some light. I've personally had conversations with this group no less than three times, especially last Tuesday, we had a conversation, the week prior, and then about two weeks before that. We have met with just about every one of those residents. Every one of them had the opportunity to work with Armenian Relief Society for emergency vouchers. I believe that the majority of them passed the initial screening. A couple of them didn't qualify due to their incomes being too high, and there was one other one-off with respect to that. The large, the large number of residents at this point are working with our housing staff for that emergency housing voucher. Neighborhood legal services as well has taken up the case of many of the residents. In fact, I received a communication today. I shared an update in terms of what our communications have been with the landlord, with the tenants, and I even provided a copy of the communication that was sent to all councilmembers by the property owner and the property manager. So their legal representatives are as aware as we are at this point of what the status of this particular situation is. To date, they have an eviction notice, there is a date for them to evict. We have shared with them, as well as neighborhood legal services, our interpretation of the law as it applies to this particular case. I don't believe at this point, not that I'm going to give legal advice, I'm not an attorney, but I don't, we don't believe that the notice complies as of yet. The permits that are required to be pulled to substantiate a substantial remodel or to justify a substantial remodel have not been pulled yet. The permits that have been pulled are for lesser things. I think that was part of the miscommunication with the tenants and/or the landlord initially. So things like large-scale plumbing, large-scale electrical work, those are things that could substantiate a substantial remodel. Things like, you know, painting and/or replacement of minor things does not. So at this point, that's all been shared. There really is no additional information that we can share with them. If there's any further communication that needs to be had, we'll be happy to communicate with their legal representatives.
Okay. When you say, sorry, when you say eviction, you mean it's a notice to move out?
At this point, there is no unlawful detainer filed.
Okay. Okay. All right. We can't do a back and forth, but what we would say is, we have your contact information, and they know, Leana, you should know who to contact in the housing staff to get these questions answered. That's really the right place to do it. This is not the right place to have a back and forth.
I would like to thank John for assisting us last week and talking with us, but I want
to say that the workers who have been in touch with us have not provided us...
Have not provided us with any other information other than coming here and filling out the
application.
I think, again, let, you know, let us, either handle through neighborhood legal services or even rental rights program staff can go back, but we, at this point, we really can't keep having this back and forths.
Yeah. All right. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned at 9:29.